This is the city council. Excuse me, city council regular meeting, May eighteenth, twenty twenty one. As always, wanna welcome our radio and newspaper and any other guests that we have tonight. And we'll call the meeting to work, Callero.
Davis?
Here.
St. Columbia?
Present.
Crockett? Franklin? Etherly? Ford? Crockett? Only two have said present, Mayor.
Only two?
Uh huh, Ms. Davis and Mr. St. Columbia, no one else responded.
Okay. Uh, this job here this Friday, trying to think something about some time at the college for FedEx Ground. The event we held recently yielded forty-nine applications. And also this Friday, this Friday they expect to receive more. And they've offered free transportation. They're gonna do the onboarding process, which is basically the hiring, official hiring process here instead of up there. So that that saves some transportation time and money. And then they're gonna bus people from the visitor center in Helena, not in Lula, to all of Branch and back. I've probably mentioned this before, but the FedEx Ground has been for the last two years carrying about three hundred people back and forth from Indianola, Mississippi to all of Branch, which is further commute. And they tracked them to see how many were still there two years later. And nearly everyone was still there. And so FedEx here is the same thing. They go places even further than than the Atlanta. At the same time, we have employers here that have positions available. And yet we're the third highest county in Arkansas in unemployment. So there's some something missing there. And we have already so many people commuting to other places to wait in Stockart and Forest City and other places in Mississippi and Memphis. And, you know, one would hope we could keep people here at home. So the places that have available jobs, we're also trying to focus on. There was a job fair for them a couple of weeks ago as well. So it's kind of an interesting thing that we have such high unemployment and yet we have available jobs like this. So I think that's communication is a big part of it. Okay, Ms. Ramsey, do we have a quorum yet? You wanna Callero again?
Crockett? Franklin? Etherly? Ford, pardon? Ford? Okay, that gives us three plus two, Mayor makes.
I'm here.
Uh, okay, Ms. Crockett's here.
All right, so we have a legal quorum. Next item on the agenda would be the minutes of May fourth. Ms. Ramsey, you wanna review that?
Um, you had in your minutes for May fourth. If you had a chance to read them, Ms. Ford was kind enough to call me with one correction, which had to do with the voting on the event permit, which I'll make that change when I retype them.
Move to accept the minutes. And discussion, I have something to say.
Okay.
Ms. Franklin moves adoption of the minutes, May fourth, twenty twenty-one, is there a second? I'll second it. Ms. St. Columbia, second is the motion, discussion.
Uh, Mayor, I heard you saying about the job fair. I think that's a good thing, but I was hoping that you would also say this. We, if you want jobs to stay here in Phillips County, maybe you all should start doing more local business with local vendors and find people here locally to spend money with. It stops, it starts spending money outside of Helena, West Helena. Because I do know we have a Sam's card and a Walmart card that you can buy some janitorial supplies from those people. Uh, I think you should encourage the college and the school district and the hospitals to spend money locally because they are creating some kind of, some kind of local jobs for people in Helena and stop going across the bridge. That's what I had to throw back at you.
Uh, are there any questions about the minutes and motion to adopt the minutes? If not, Callero.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Of staying.
Davis?
Yes.
Ford? Etherly? I have three yes, one abstention and two absent.
Kind of a yes on the minutes.
Okay.
I guess I can.
Okay.
All right, adopt the minutes. All right, the next item on the agenda would be the treasurer's report, Mr. Turner.
Okay, this is Derek Turner, City Treasurer. I have just a couple of updates regarding the treasurer's report. I sent the city council the report through around four thirty. So I know you guys haven't had a chance to go through it and analyze it. But I just wanna give a couple of highlights, maybe a couple of lowlights as well. Through April, in the general fund, we have cash, a cash balance in the general fund of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cent. We had an operating gain through April in the general fund of two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-one cent. However, in the street department and the landfill departments, we have a loss from operations in the street department of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine thirty-three, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty-one cent. And I'm attributing most of that to a lack of property tax revenue. We haven't received any property tax revenue from the county. And so we get a portion of the property that we receive from the county goes into the general fund. Another portion goes into the street fund. And we haven't received any property tax revenue from the county as of yet. And so we've been supplementing the street fund through the general fund by paying their payroll. Uh, but a big reason for that loss in the street fund is we haven't received any property tax from the county. Had a loss also, operating loss in the landfill of a hundred and ten thousand, one ten, a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-five cent. Uh, a lot of, most of that has to do, well, some of it has to do with repair costs. And some of it has also to do with rental, the rental expense of rental equipment. We're gonna get into that a little bit later into the council meeting where we, after speaking with the mayor and the public works director and the deputy public works director, we feel like we need to purchase some equipment instead of paying such a high cost to rent the equipment. But we're gonna get into that a little bit later in the meeting. And I have also, besides that information, as far as operations in the balance sheet, I kinda wanted to give the council some information about the raises that they just approved, the last council meeting and the one before that. And so after doing some calculations, it appears that the increase in appropriations for all of the raises, all of the raises that they've approved so far, uh, you had an increase in appropriations of forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. And that includes salaries, wages and benefits as well. And a lot of that, the reason it's only forty-five thousand is because we had about twenty-five thousand dollar decrease in payroll expense from district court. District Court clerk was terminated and her salary was, I think, fifty-five thousand. And so the new district court clerk salary isn't quite that much. And so there were some savings from that, from that salary. And so overall, the change in appropriations from the raises amounted to forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. And that's about, about one percent of the budget, the appropriated budget for all of those accounts, for those line items. And it was something else. Oh, and I also made changes to the capital expenditures account in the police department. About a month ago, city council approved an increase in appropriations for sky cops. And so I added that to the budget as well. And those additions to the sky cop, to that equipment was thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And so overall, after those changes, I think it was like three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars when the budget was initially adopted. Had a three hundred and forty-four thousand dollar surplus, budget surplus. And with the increases in salary and the increases in appropriations for the sky cop, those, that current budget surplus is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-seven cent. So the city council has a little over two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in unused appropriations that that they have available to them to, you know, do other things with, whatever they choose to use those appropriations for. So does anyone have any questions? I know you haven't had time to go over the treasurer's report because I just gave it to you about an hour ago, hour and a half ago. But do you have any questions regarding the information that I just gave you?
Yes, Mr. Turner, I got a question, this landfill, this landfill. We, we got a landfill audit, right?
Uh, excuse me?
Did we get a landfill audit or something a couple of days ago?
Audit has been completed.
Okay, well, is somebody on suspension or something, or something like that?
Uh, we'll have to ask the mayor.
Hold on, wait, 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 wait. I, I, I don't, the mayor said we shouldn't ask the directors. We should ask him. That's why I scheduled a meeting last Thursday to talk to the mayor. But the mayor was too busy conducting business at his insurance company. So that's why we couldn't meet. So what I went to you get through, then I shoot, oh, Mayor, so you're the line, can you answer that question? What's going on with the landfill? Somebody suspended or something out there, the landfill?
Well, all I can say about it right now is the officers are auditing the city. The conflict I had with you, I was actually doing city business, so that's not true, what you said earlier. But you wouldn't know that because you didn't ask. But the question about the audit and suspension, I don't, I don't discuss personnel issues in these meetings. We can go in executive session if you want to.
Well, we will, we will do that. And Mayor, when you said that I didn't ask you, I scheduled a meeting with you and I sat there and watched the guy who came down to city hall, go to the issuers coming to meet you. And I watched him walk in and you could've scheduled the same thing for me. You was, you just didn't wanna meet with me because you knew what we were gonna discuss. So I don't, it is not, I'm, it's, I'll wait till another time. I'll let Mr. Turner get through his treasure report. But me and you got business to talk about tonight and it's on the agenda to address that tonight. So please don't leave, as you normally would do when it comes to me.
If you had asked the gentleman who he was, he was at the G I S office and we had a conflict because I already had a meeting scheduled. So we're gonna move on now. We're gonna move on. So any other questions of the treasurer's, one of the treasurer's report? Please try to keep it dramatic.
Mayor, I, I would like to add in response to Mr. Franklin's question about any audit information, the question that he had earlier. The audit typically, and for, we keep any audit information confidential until the actual audit report is released. They have to, that information that they give us is always confidential until the actual audit report is made public. And so that, that's the reason why I answered that question as far as the audit is concerned. Uh, but as far as any thing like that, I, I would still leave that up to the mayor to let you know if we have any employees that are suspended or not. Basically, they asked us to keep that information confidential until an official, until the audit report is made official.
Yeah, and this is so the public understands, we get audited every year by legislative audit. This is the normal, I guess the pandemic did delay it some, but, but we're just undergoing the normal, regular audit. Once those findings are made, it's public information. We put them on our website and we release them to the council. They're on the state website. And if any, in the meantime, any, any information regarding that. As Mr. Turner said.
Also, I, I would like them to know that the clerk and I have been in touch with and have communications with the county clerk. And so they are working towards our property tax. So, so we are working, working on it.
Now, I know there's been some transitional issues over there, so that's, I know that's been not a big surprise. Any other questions regarding treasurer's report? Mr. Turner? All righty, thank you, Mr. Turner, appreciate your time. We're gonna move on now to our first item on the agenda. We have, and let me see if Squidland Markin is online. There's an event permit request for Second Baptist Church block party. It should be in your packet. Need to review. And is this Markin or anybody else on, on the Zoom call who wants to be available for questions or speak to it? If you are, go ahead and speak up because I probably can't tell it to you. I'm assuming, I'm assuming by the silence that nobody's on here to, to present it. But you could say that it's been presented to, to the city. And May twenty-ninth, which is Memorial Day weekend, I think, is the, is the time that it's being requested. One of the things that I think is gonna be done in conjunction with this event is a thank you for the individuals that helped with our Easter storm last year. Reverend Jarvis Smith is who actually asked the disaster folks from the Southern Baptist Convention and Arsenal Baptist Convention to come to to, to help us. And you all remember the folks in the yellow jackets who were out with chainsaws volunteering. And, you know, I've said this before and I won't repeat it, but I can tell you that, you know, I, I got very emotional when they left town because they were, became such a big part of us trying to recover from that. Particularly individuals who needed help. And anyway, so one of the primary events of this is gonna be a thank you for them who come. And, and I believe the fire departments can show up at it. Any questions about the Second Baptist Heart Block Party has to be approved by the council for them to, to hold it. And we're not gonna have another one, another meeting or a chance to approve it before the event. Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the event?
So moved.
Ms. Davis makes moves that we adopt the motion to approve the permit.
Second, second.
Franklin? I think it was Mr. Franklin's second emotion. Any other conversation or questions about the motion? If not, Callero.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford? Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Motion passes, event permits been approved. On behalf of Second Baptist Church, thank you. Okay, for the next, for the next, first item up for discussion, water department salary adjustments requested by Mr. Franklin. Mr. Franklin, you're recognized.
Mayor, you know, let me, let me, give me just a minute, I can, yeah. Uh, you know what this is, uh, this is about. Man, I, I like the way you operate, I really do. I like how you value certain employees. Now, you, you got, you got some guys who, the night that we said, oh, heavy equipment operators will get the raise. Well, you picked two people and you gave them what you want them to have. And the other young man has the operational license. You, you didn't ask Mr. Benzine, then you, you just decided that you'd take what somebody gave him. The stuff that you do, you can, you can have us in, in, in a legal fight. Uh, I got the paperwork on it and I meant to share with the other council members, but I'm a, I tabled the water department to the next meeting because I wanna make sure they have everything they need so that you will be able to tell me those lies that you tell. So good. So I'm gonna table this until the next meeting. So I'd like to go to the next item on the agenda. But council members, I promise you, I have this, I hand deliver this to you all, the information that you need. So you all can be better equipped. And I do apologize for having issues come up today and get you off. I will get that, that handout to you all for the next meeting. So you can all be, you all can be better prepared to handle this water issue.
I also add that, can we put it on there with the water department, why the water department is being fined for not having certified?
Well, we haven't been fined, we haven't been fined yet, but we can definitely be there. As far as the salary adjustments, everybody who, every department has sent to us who is a heavy equipment operator or an equipment operator on our list as equipment operators have received.
Understood, you said table.
But city council, so in order to be given a raise to be a heavy equipment or just an equipment operator, most of them are heavy equipment. Actually have to be equipment operators and there has to be some evidence that they are equipment operators. You can't just say somebody is to give them a raise, having said that.
Well, well, that's just like, that's, but that's why we, that's why, that's why, that's why. I'm tired of you, I am recognized. That we said, I asked to table this, I asked to table this, I didn't ask you to keep on talking, let's just table it. You don't have to, you don't have to defend your case, let's table it until the next meeting. That's what I just asked you to do, I asked you to get through all this talking, just let's table it to the next meeting, like I asked you to. So I can make sure the other council members have the correct, uh, uh, the, the correct information in front of them. Let's just table it. We don't need all that talking, let's table it. And we can, we can, when you're talking about the next meeting, that's what I just asked you to do, not for you to keep on running and talking about stuff. They can't make a decision right now because they don't have.
Franklin, you, you, you accuse me of lying and so.
Man, how about this, let's just table that, table your, table your.
Mr. Franklin, you can't say, you can't speak a lot and then table something.
Well, I just said, the council did not have that, the council, the council, the council does not have the information that I need them to have to make an adequate decision. That's why I said table it. Now, you gonna make, you gonna make me, you gonna make, you gonna make me put you out here about all the stuff that you're doing. So why don't you just be quiet and let's table this because I'll get you the next meeting. So let's just table this before I really put you out there, okay? So stop running your mouth about stuff, let's table this issue like I just asked you to. Okay, Calvin, table it, I asked to table it, let's move to the next item on the agenda.
Ms. Franklin, you're the one who needs to stop running his mouth.
Well, I have the floor.
But you can't say what you want.
If you keep on talking.
You're not recognized to speak and I'm gonna ask you to be muted.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, Calvin. So come on, what's next?
Are you done?
No, because I, I got a lot more for you because you don't, you don't, this is a game you wanna, wanna play. Because see, I, I, I could show what you're really doing and I got the proof and I can tell the other council members what you're doing. This is not a confrontational meeting, I just asked you to table it. Now, we can table this, this item and let's go on to the next. You have to, you have to explain stuff like we're little children.
I'm not the one acting like a child. If you, if you wanna bring up something and make allegations, you need to be able to support it and you couldn't do that tonight.
I can't support it.
I will table it because you cannot support your allegations and we'll move on. You recognize, I'm getting ready to, I'm getting ready to mute you if you don't stop.
You oughta mute yourself, you're talking too much.
You, you are out of order, Mr. Franklin. If you can't behave, act like a city councilman in the city council meeting, you don't, you're not gonna be recognized.
You can't.
In the same way that I would have you removed from a physical meeting, I will get you muted. If you cannot abide by the normal meeting rules and speak when you're supposed to be speaking, when you're recognized. Now, the next item on the agenda is the usage of city vehicles, Mr. Franklin.
Yes, sir, Calvin, I, I, I wanna make sure this right here, let's get someone that I can support it. I can support whatever I'm telling you. Right now at this moment, I don't think it's fair to other city council members that they don't have the information that I have in front of me. So that's a disadvantage to them. So now to this, uh, the city equipment, I mean, city vehicles, all these decals and stuff that you, that you people who have gotten these decals have not put on their cars. I'm tired of folks driving these cars to their personal, to a home. I, I, there is a, a ordinance on the books that if you're not on-call person, the vehicle needs to be parked at city hall, all decals needs to be on those trucks. You got people who are riding around the city, you talking about abuse, abuse of property, they are abusing the property. You've got some folks going out here to Mississippi, South Haven, Memphis in those trucks down to the fish banks and you know they are. So there's an ordinance that those trucks need to be parked. If they're not police and fire, those vehicles need to be at city hall every day, code enforcement, all those vehicles need to be at city hall. They need to drive their vehicles to work and pick their, their assigned vehicle up. When it clocked out for work, leave the city vehicle at the city. That goes on, a court officer, all those folks who are driving these cars that they're personally use, needs to be on city property. Because if they have a wreck out here in city property, we're liable. So I ask all, there's an ordinance already on the books for that. Am I right, Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, sir.
So I, as, as somebody over property, I want all city vehicles. If you're not non-emergency, I want it parked at city hall every day. You drive your vehicle to work, you drive your vehicle back home, your personal vehicle, not city's vehicle. Because that's the problem, you got so many unmarked vehicles where people get to drive their vehicles out of Phillips County. So that's not gonna keep. And somebody's phone is not mute. So I'm gonna tell you like this, that's what I wanna see, this ordinance in place. If, if it can't, if it can't be done, then I, I, I instantly turn to drop me up something else. I found a way to find folks who are driving those cars out of city limits. Because when you, they should be going to Barn, Lake, Lakeview, Lexa. If you're, if you're a non-emergency, if, if on-call weekend. If you're, if you're a non-emergency, if, if on-call, we can't find the water department. If they on-call, they should have a vehicle, everybody in the water department shouldn't have a vehicle to take home. We, 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 we're not paying tax care, we're not paying employees to drive vehicles home and, and, and they get the amount of the city vehicles. That's the problem that we got now, those vehicles need to be parked at city hall every day, drive your vehicle to work or to your job site. You pick your vehicle up from the job site to do your job, not riding the, the city vehicles around.
Do you have a specific allegation, a specific name?
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, uh, look, that's not here or there, I just told you what I wanted. I'm, I don't care what, no, I, I don't think I want people to do is what I just asked you. I'm, I'm not, I'm not your, uh, Snoop Dogg, you find you one of those.
Do you run the city's day-to-day operations, do you know?
But I control city property though, let's get that straight, I control city property. So, if, 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 if city halls, if it's vehicles.
Put you in control of city property.
Ain't, ain't, ain't that my job type? Hey, man, hey, you know what, I'm a good, I, I'm, I'm trying to be nice to you today, one of the days. Mr. Valley, the city council role is what, property and finances, am I right, Mr. Valley, those are two things we do, property and finances, am I right? Thank you so much, so, so, Mr. Mayor, you need to know your place, and I'm over.
You know, control, you, you've already. You don't control the day-to-day activities of that property.
That is a city vehicle.
How much power you think you have, you don't have.
Okay, I don't, I, 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 I work for titles, not power, brother. Mr. Valley, the, the property, those, those vehicles are city property, which I'm in control, which the whole, the whole, we're the city council, in control of property, right?
Uh, yes, sir, the city council is in charge of, of finding real property. Would be land, the city has a. Uh, where, where it tells that the vehicles are to be, uh, marked and they're supposed to be parked as well. I think Mr. St. Columbia was responsible, that ordinance back when Mayor Dave Battle was, was, uh, the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Valley, so what I'm saying is already i- in place, uh, Calvin Smith. I'm trying to get you to understand, I'm tired of people driving these vehicles out of hell in the west hell. So I'm not trying, I'm not gonna snitch on nobody because you know what's going on.
And yet you can't provide a single instance with. You don't know why they're doing it.
And actually, I don't, I don't give a damn why they're doing it, I'm just telling you what I don't want to happen, okay? So you need to get out of character, I just told you.
Excuse me, excuse, can I, uh, I think what, the, the thing is, is, is not pointing fingers at. One person because it's happening with more than one vehicle, I don't think he's trying to put it on one person. He's just saying that the ordinance be, needs to be enforced.
Thank you, Ms. Crockett.
That, that city, city officials and city employees go out of town all the time on city business. And so you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't apparently know exactly what they're doing unless you asked about a specific situation.
Going to their houses every day, going to their houses, so, well, okay, so the city, the city is paying people to drive their vehicles. To the liquor store, the people are driving, the pe- the people are paying for people to, to drive over the carts there after hours to the, the tobacco store. So I have, and so again, there, that's what you do. I don't wanna put, I don't wanna put nobody out there, I'm asking for something, what should be in, in effect, in effect, okay? So sta- stop doing all that, because I'm, 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 I, I, if I, I'm not scared of anybody that's on your payroll, let's get that correct. So, and like I told you once, if, if they wanna whip somebody, I'm the one to whip, cuz I, I don't care who I tell them, so.
You're not telling anybody, you're just like.
Argue about it, I just asked you to do something and you got a whole lot of math about it, I didn't ask you to do one thing, that's it. And, and, and the city council, that's, that's why the city is so jacked up now, because you wanna put on this horse and pony show. And the city looks like crap anyway, because you so busy, wanna be in the paper. All the, all I ask you to do is where the ordinance that are set in place, have the employees to abide by them, that's all I ask you to do. Either you say yes, sir, Mr. Franklin, no, sir, Mr. Franklin, I'm not trying to get in day-to-day operations. But I know, ain't no business open on a, on a Sunday where folks can get out their car and get in a water truck and drive around and do it constantly.
We have a lot of businesses, actually.
What business you know open on a Sunday?
Next item on the agenda.
What else you got, what, what is on there?
The next item that you asked to be on the agenda along with Ms. Davis is property demolition and condemnations, code violations and citations. Mr. Jones is, I think, on here, if, um. But I think he's doing this to, to answer.
I'm here, I'm here.
Hold on, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, this is not for you, so, uh, we, we, I'm not, we, we're not gonna discuss this with you. Cuz I'm gonna tell you why, the, the mayor, in, in, in the American, whatever, but Ms. Davis, excuse me, I'll let you get, I'll let you handle this, but I'm just gonna say this and then I'm done with it. Mayor, Mr. Jones, this has nothing to do with you, the mayor said in, in the paper post. That he don't like for his department heads to come to the meeting, so I'm not gonna address you. I'm gonna address the mayor, who's the CEO of the city, I should never address you unless it's a need that you, that, that you want something from this body. I wanna talk to the mayor about it, not you.
Something that's not true, what I've said is the directors are not required to if they don't want to, that's what I actually saw.
You said, you said on Facebook that you don't let your department heads come to the meeting because the city council beat them up. That's what you said on Facebook, and I have that.
There are, there are some department heads that you. Try to beat up, and yeah, I will, I will tell them that I would rather take that abuse from you than, than to have them take it. Because your goal is to run them away from the city, and some of those people are very valuable to the city. Your goal is to control it and to run off the people who don't agree with you, Mr. Franklin, so that's right. If there's a department that you're beating up and trying to run off, then I will, I'll gladly take what you're doing.
Trying to run anybody off.
It's not elected, take your abuse. When nobody asks him to, and I'm not gonna ask him to do it.
But I don't wanna talk to Mr. Jones.
Running your mouth long enough.
I, I don't wanna talk.
Please, please mute Mr. Franklin, since he can't seem to abide by the rules of a common, everyday meeting, please mute. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, I think there are legitimate questions though, Ms. Davis, you're recognized. Are there, are there questions of, 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 Mr. Jones or me about property demolition and condemnations, code violations and citations?
I actually had, um, wanted a report from Code. I don't think, I'm not, me personally, I don't think it should be a choice, you know, I think if. If it's a report, I think it should, I know that Mr. Jones is basically over them, but if it's a report to be made, I feel like Code should be here. If I have specific questions, I think I should be able to ask them. But I just wanted a report as to where we are and what we're going to do so that we don't let the public know what's going on. Uh, I never received the list as far as the demolitions. That I've asked for before. I also want to know about the new hire, because we were supposed to hire a new code enforcement officer. So that we will have three instead of two. I wanna get to understand as far as the city taking, am I right, the city is Mr. Jones. The city is going to take them down and somebody else is going to pick up what they, what you all take down?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Ms. Davis, correct.
Is there someone in place for that, or is there?
Mr. Ron, he would have started last week, Ms. Davis. But they got a project down from the landfill where they got to have so much gravel out there to finish their project. That was gonna start, I think, last Monday. And they was gonna start on the project over here on Ohio Street and on Beach Street. Or something come up where he got a contract, he had to finish the contract deal before he can go it on, participate with the city.
Okay, it's, can I ask a question right here? Was this, was this, uh, bid it out? How did we come by him being the one to do?
Okay, we actually have been saving money, Ms. Crockett, by tearing it down ourselves. We, we towed the buildings down, we have got like two or.
No, I'm talking about the cleanup, the cleanup.
Mr. Wrong.
For him to haul it off, yes, ma'am.
But I'm saying, was it bid it out, or? You know, I'm saying, how did he come back?
And we took several bids, we did, we took several bids, with him and, uh, with Ron and also with Money Maker.
So are those the only two people that you all spoke about?
Uh, we couldn't get nobody else to participate.
Okay, cuz I hadn't heard anything about it being, uh.
Yes, ma'am. Well, Ms. Sanders, Ms. Sanders on the phone, I, I mean, here on the Zoom, uh, we submitted two bids for Mr. Money Maker. That we, uh, produced to Ms. Sanders, uh, and one for, uh, Mike Money Maker.
Well, I'm asking, was it advertised?
Uh, I don't know about that.
Let me, let me interject something. That we, we asked for estimates, we didn't award them, and so we didn't bring them up before the council. The, how much is the demolition, or not the demolition, the cleanup on the Beach Street apartments? Plus the owners of that helped pay some towards that. Do you remember Bobby?
Uh, I think he wanted to charge, uh, seven, fi- five to seven thousand dollars. But it was more than net if he had to tow the building down. Both of them, I think one of them like fifteen thousand, one was like seventeen thousand.
No, but my question, my question is still being like, you're going around. My question is, were these jobs bid it out? That's where they advertised, that's all I'm trying to find out, I'm not trying to find out how much they cost or anything. I'm just trying to ask, was it bid it out or was it, uh, advertised?
I, I can't answer that, Ms. Crockett, uh. I can't answer that. But the job, ain't nobody done the job yet.
I can answer that, yeah, well, we, what we asked for were estimates to see. What they could do, and if it was over the five thousand or seventy-five hundred, then we would have to come to the council and also bid it out. It's over seventy-five hundred, so I'm not aware that we've approved any contract for anything over five thousand dollars. What, what Mr. Jones is kind of alluding to is that when we asked, uh, I think only two vendors. And that's one of the problems is we don't, if there are others, then we'd like to know about them, because we don't have. Enough people out there doing this, that's real issue, but of those who are. Uh, they all came in over five and over seventy-five hundred for multiple houses and, and they wanted to tear them down, clean it up. The bid or the amount for Beach Street was way over my limits. So what we did and what we're, it's much easier to tear them down, some of them tear themselves down almost. The cleanup is the hard part, it's the part we don't have adequate equipment for, we really need, uh. A dump truck. That's the biggest problem, the front and loader and the dump truck would be what we really need, but we don't have that. And so the cleanup part by, by asking for that part of it, instead of the tearing down and doing the tearing down ourselves. Were able to use that demolition money that you, uh, that, that you asked for, uh, in the budget to go further. Ms. Davis and Ms. Crockett, so that's the answer, we have bid it out legally because we haven't actually awarded. We haven't actually approved any projects to move forward, because they were too expensive. Once you consider what we can do on the, on the demolition part, it's the cleanup part, so.
So will that be, will that be bid it out? Mean advertise for being. What I'm saying is, I thought that we have to take bids. Or take, or advertise that you got some demolition cleanup that you needed and you need people to give you estimates and then you go by there.
Over five thousand or seventy. If it's under that, we don't do that.
Mr. Val, Mr. Val. That is like a contract, right?
Be a contract.
So if it's, uh, if it's a contract, does that, and it's like a job, it don't have to be advertised or anything, you can just give it to who you want to?
Well, it's, it's two parts of orders, the first part, if it's over five thousand dollars, then he, he, he has to, uh, get your approval. But if it's under seventy-five hundred, he doesn't have to bid it, your bidding part of the ordinance says it has to be over seventy-five hundred dollars. If it's over seventy-five hundred dollars, then he has to bid it.
And so we just haven't done it, those projects that have been over those amounts. What we've done, as Mr. Jones said, is we've demolished them ourselves, uh, and we cleaned up a lot of them ourselves. The Beach Street project is the main one that I'm thinking of, uh, as far as cleanup goes, and as Mr. Jones said, he. He left, uh, for, for some other reason and can, and has, has to come back before it finally gets cleaned up. And then we also received some money from the property owner to help with that, so that offsets some of that cost. Okay, I wanna address two other things, we advertised, I believe, today for that third code position. Um, so I wanna answer that question, the other question, which was a good one, was, uh, a list, basically. Uh, Mr. Gant did do some, uh, basically sort of an activity report, but it wasn't really what I think. You asked for, and it wasn't really what I would like to see myself. And that's an updated list of where we are on all the demolitions and all the condemnations. And there is such a list, but it, it ha- it hasn't been completely updated yet.
I've been asking for this list for a while.
Well, you know, after I became mayor, we had the first meeting, all the people that have anything to do with this, including Energy and Center Point, Judge and. Everybody, um, and we, uh, we did a list like that and did present it, but it has to be updated. And it's a very extensive and long process. The second thing is, I've been talking to the software, I think I mentioned this already, but. Um, the city's been paying for software on this for years and years and years, but we haven't been using, using it. Uh, or at least the full functionality of it. And one of those functionalities is you can generate this list very quickly, if we were doing the in, in the, uh. The data entry correctly, as we go, you could literally print out a report at any given moment. And that's what the software was purchased for years ago, uh, it's been updated. And I'm hoping that this third code person.
So who's responsible for that now?
Well, that's just, it did, Dallas Smith is the last person who really did that very well. And it's, I, I mean, I've looked at it and it's been, some entries have been made, but it's not being used. And it never has been used completely for all the functions of it. Um, so I'm hoping this third code person that we hire will have, one of the questions that I will ask them is their. You know, their acuity with, with IT and software, to see what their aptitude is to be able to be trained and, and do that. Because really, that information is extremely important, and I'd love for it to be public information, they, maybe anybody can get it anytime. Um, and we have individuals to do it, but you have to get over that information correctly and be trained on it, and, and that hasn't happened, at least. Since Dallas was there, so, and even then, it wasn't completely used to its maximum.
So what you're saying is the present code enforcement is not able to do that?
They're not, they've not been trained to, um, fully use the functionality of that software, that's correct. They haven't been trained, so I'm hoping that we can do that, and I'm hoping this third code enforcement officer will be the main point person.
And so the third person is going to be the person that's in the office and the other two are going to be on the streets doing citations and demolition? Is that what you?
I mean, that's, that's the goal, that's, that's the role that Dallas played, uh, when she was there. And, uh, Mr. Gant is the one who enters information when it does get entered right now. And, uh, so that would, that would free him up to, but it's not, it's not being used to its full functionality. So that's really because, try, I'm not blaming anybody, it, it just. And that's really because, try, I'm not blaming anybody. It, it just had, nobody's really been adequately trained for, on it. I don't believe anybody's ever been adequately trained on it. And it's pretty amazing software. So, and, and the best thing about it is it can present the report you're asking for. And I would like to see it too. So I'm, I'm just as, uh, anxious to see this. And I've been on the phone with them, trying to learn it myself so I can understand what to expect, um, and also to, you know, talk to them about the training part of it.
So if Mr., if Mr. Gann is doing that, then Mr., uh, Williams is doing the citations and violations?
Mr. Williams primarily on the street. He's sends the, he sends a lot of the folks. He goes around checking on occupational permits and licenses and sends them down to Mr. Gant. And he actually does the occupational license. And we, we've done a lot of that. He does a lot of the code violations in the field. Mr. Gant's done some of that too. Um, and some of the other code, there are many, many code issues. The big trucks in town. Uh, there are many, many things that, that they do in the field. On the demolition side of it, um, you know, that, that stuff has to be entered and then where it is in the stage of the process. And then there is, are many, many stages of the demolition process and how to know where it is at any given time. And also, we say this, we're one of the la, one of only three counties that have not completed our GIS, which is what I was having that meeting about the other day. Um, data points, which means our nine-one-one system is not adequate in the city. In the county, most, all of it has been completed. When I became mayor, the, the part of the county, Phillips County, that had not been done for the GIS state system, which is, by the way, has been there about fifteen years anyway, is, uh, Phillips County is one of those counties and the city was the part of the county that it was lacking. So we began that process before COVID hit. And we made progress, made a lot of progress, actually. Um, but, but we did not get there when the pandemic hit. That meeting the other day was to pick up that project. We thought that was a code project. In part because one of the things they have to do is address verification. So if, if a house is missing, uh, you scrub that address off the nine-one-one, off the data point, and that there, that, that affects nine-one-one, but it also affects data scout. When you go onto, uh, the county auditors or assessors webpage to look up a property. And I use this and, and I do use this in my business. And it's extremely inaccurate in, in the city limits. And that's because our data points are inaccurate. And so one of our goals is to get that completed this year so that Phillips County can be, there will only be two counties left in Arkansas that have not adequately completed it. And our nine-one-one system, if you talk to our EMS people, they'll tell you that they've had to learn inside the city limits, uh, how to call people on their cell phones in order to find some of the places that people call in about. That's very alarming. Nobody wants that to happen. Um, and there are many, many other uses of GIS information. So that's a big part of what, what I want Code Department to do.
So are we, are we getting the code enforcers some training that they need for this? Are we just waiting to have somebody before we train somebody? Cuz I think if you're, uh, the head of a department, I think that you should be able to do anything that you request other people that work under you to.
That's true.
Right. Well, I'm hoping that we can have one training, uh, for all three code officers, once we get the third person hired. Uh, Dallas pretty much handled, again, even she wasn't fully trained. She was here when I got here. Software's been around for years. Um, so yeah, um, that's one of the things I'm talking to him about is to how to rectify that. So we get the backswing use of that software. We're paying, I think, almost six thousand dollars a year for it and have been for some time. So, but I'm also trying to get trained on it as well. So I can know when I look at it, what it does and what to expect from it. So that when Ms. Davis asks for a report, we can, and you don't even have to have asked me for it. You really, you could just ask whoever it is to, to print you out a report and email it. And then they can be able to do it pretty easily. And not just, uh, Ms. Davis, but anybody, uh, actually.
So whoever we're paying six thousand dollars a year, are these people doing the training?
They will do the training, yeah. That's right.
I mean, because this is, I mean, this is, it's, it's going, it goes on year after year after year after year after year. I know it's a process and I know it's rained a lot, but it's not getting any better. It's, it's simply getting worse. I have, uh, one more question. And I want to ask Mr. Jones, with all that you have to do as far as the grass cutting this season, do you have time to do both? Do, does your, I won't say you, does your crew have time to do both? Mr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am. Both for what, Ms. Davis?
The, with the grass cutting season and demolition, as far as tearing down houses and knocking down houses, do you have time to do both? Does your crew have?
Yeah, I can stand some help with the grass cutting. I need help with the grass cutting. But with the demo, I've been breaking off myself cuz my guys been too busy and me and the code enforcement, all of us, uh, been participating with, with the demo my, ourselves.
Okay. And even with the demo, is this something that, I mean, with people that have to be trained to do this or you, you know, anybody can do this?
Well, I mean, anybody trying to o- operate hea- heavier equipment can, can do it. You know, and like I say, I've, I've been participating in this to help out to try to save money for the city. Like the, the B Street project. I went over and I helped tow it down myself. So I have been participating to try to save us some money. Cuz you see the, the, the last estimate, Ms. David, but some of these guys come in saying they're charged a twelve thousand dollar, tear down a building, uh, and then four, three, four thousand dollars to pick it up, you know, I went and, and did it myself. And I had, I, the code enforcement did come over there with me to assist me with it.
If I can add to that, um.
That's, that's what a good department head does.
He also gets on the mower and mows himself and fills in. He also drives the harvest truck, bin truck. Just about fills in everywhere, uh, when somebody's sick or off. Um, so I can't say enough good things and, and, uh, he does need help right now, I'll say that.
And that's a good thing, but that's not code.
Well, I was gonna answer the code part of that. Uh, the code is the asbestos, is the asbestos certification. Uh, and if it's a, if it's, if they burn it down and the fire chief, um, and, and assistant chief have to come over and inspect it to make sure it's complying with the laws regarding, regarding burning. And, uh, sometimes they don't, sometimes they do.
Yeah.
So th- there, the, the code enforcement officer is responsible for making sure that gas is turned off, electricity's turned off. All of those boxes are checked. The fire departments inspected it and so forth. And the, what Mr. Jones helps with is the actual demolition part. Well, we would love to have, I don't mind telling you. It was, when I asked the question, I, I came in and our first code officer when I took office. And I said, what do we need to do? What, what do you need to do your job? And the answer was a front end loader and a three axle dump truck. And I've been trying to figure out, find the money to pay for those things ever since. If we could get those two items for code and also train code even to operate some of that, we would save an awful lot of time.
And where are you gonna get those people from there to do that?
So that the end.
Where are you gonna get those people from to do that? Because you taking those people from street.
No, that's what I'm saying. We could, we could train our code officers to rock, break that equipment, um, if we had it.
So they're gonna go out and give citations and they're gonna, they're gonna knock down houses and drive the dump truck and all that too? I'm just trying to.
I, I know that sounds like a lot. It's, it is a lot. It's a lot of hard work. But the recommendations that I've been giving from everybody who's done code since I've been here is that we need those two items of equipment dedicated to code. Um, and the third person's job, we could do as much of the legal or work with, uh, on, on, uh, Mr. Valley or City Attorney, who's also part of this, a very important part of this process. Um, could check those boxes off, make sure all those things are done. And two field guys could concentrate on, on, on the actual doing of some of that stuff. And I mean, I think the street department and sanitation are still gonna have to help out, uh, as much as we have. And the other thing is, we, you know, as Mr. Jones chimed in here, but we've done more houses than we've ever done. But you gotta remember that we're also leasing houses, I'd say, one every two weeks at least to another burn down.
Yes.
Yeah, but they're just being, they're just burning, but they're not being torn down. I mean, how do you, I mean, I know that it's a process, but how do you choose? It, are there burned structures or are it just, cuz I know some things that have been sitting, standing there for years. It looks like you can almost touch it with your finger and they fall over. So how, I mean, how do you go, what's first?
Well, one of, one of that would be the people who are paying the city to do it are gonna be, are gonna be first because they're paying and they, and they, they're cooperating. We don't have to get through the legal process like we do with the others. Um, the ones, then they're the ones that were involved in the legal process at some level or some stage. Um, but the first, right now, we're just trying to catch up with the ones of the people who have offered to pay the city to do it. And.
Well, who keeps the list of who's already paid?
You may, right there. I think Mr. Gant has that.
Yeah, it was my question.
Cuz it's a lot of them that, that are just burned, but they just stand, they stand there for years. I mean, I, would that not be priority? I understand you saying who's paying and who's not paying, but I don't know. It's just, we need, I mean, we gotta, need a better plan than we have.
Uh, well, I'm gonna give you an example. Just remember, this isn't public property. It's property.
I understand. I do know that. I do know that. I know that it, it shouldn't cost the city. I know. But in some places it does.
The Pink House on Oakland, if you, you kinda can't hardly miss it. And it's got some growth around it. It had, I stopped there one, one day and looked at it myself. And, and it's got a notice from the Valley Administration of condemnation. And I think I took a picture of it. Um, and it's needed to be torn down for years, but the state of Arkansas is telling us we can't do it because the taxes are on it. And I'm trying to work with the state to tell, to get us to somehow change that so we can knock down that house. And that's just one house. This is one house. Hundreds of houses. So each, each one of them, and Mr. Valley can chime in if you want, because he understands the process too. It, it, each one, and we're, we're being saved right now. I mean, we're being saved for three hundred thousand dollars for something that y'all voted to do. So it's very legal and it was a public safety issue. And we're still being saved for it. Now, it was shortly after I took office. So.
Anyway. That, that property was bankrupt at first. And then after getting out of bankruptcy, uh, the taxes were behind on it. So when we were ready to move on it, and then you had a tax problem. So that's, that's the precise issue with the problem of Oakland. Uh, we were by law prohibited from even going to pro, the condit- condemnation process. A lady that owns it was in bankruptcy at the time. And so we had to stop all access on it. Uh, anyhow, I, you know, I think what Franklin was trying to, trying to address you.
Uh, I, I was writing some stuff there. Ms. Crockett, what she was asking, asking you about, about the contract, those are serial contracts that you're doing. That's what Ms. Crockett was trying to tell you, that you, 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 you do a serial contract for people. And that's why she was asking what, what is supposed to be bid it out. You, you keep it below your spending authority. So you can, they can do something this week and come back next week. And, and as long as you do it above the seventy-five hundred dollars, they can keep coming back and back. And you can keep paying who you want. That's, that's, that, that's to you, Ms. Crockett, when you was asking about why, why is it not being, being it out? He's running a serial contract scam, just like he did with, uh, with his, uh, IT in the box and all this other stuff. That's what he does. And I was thinking about something else, uh, when you was asking about the, the, the second code enforcement, the first, the, the, the supervising code enforcement. He has, the mayor had, you and the code enforcement has been the training. So this code enforcement should be more advanced than the second person on the code enforcement. Because you, you and him decided to go to a training before. And I don't think you should be hollering about Mrs. Dallas Smith, which is, which, excuse me for calling her name, but she's not an employee anymore. You've almost had two years or a year and a half to, to replace her, or not to replace her because I stopped that. But you had a, they, they, they had enough time to, to get trained. Mister, Mister, no, no supervisor has been on training before. And the other person has, has been left to stay. The other, the other person has a vehicle that the city provides and has had one for some time. So he should be up on reports and everything else cuz Mr. Gant was in the office. So, uh, there's a list of things that, you know, and I, and I promise you, uh, Calvin, I don't wanna argue with you about it. Just let me say what I gotta say. You don't have to give a rebuttal on it. It is what it is. And with, 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 with all the, all the other things that are going on in City Hall or at, or in the city. The reason why it seem like me and you are having this clash is because you don't relate anything to the city council until it's like time for us to buy something you want us to buy. Or if it's something that benefits you to make you look good, then that's when you want our input on it. But for me, uh, with the serial contract, that, I hope the audit catches that with, with, uh, and with the, with the water department, with anybody who drives a city vehicle, I think we need to have some kind of a law in those be, a mileage law in those vehicles. Cuz since they won't put the decals on and since they won't, uh, park them, I think you need to come up with a, a, a mileage law to tell us how many miles those vehicles are driving every week. And I think that, that, that should be given to the city council. Um, and another thing, I, I, there's some things that I have for you. Uh, just, just listen to you talk. Uh, I, I wish that you would get a, a better handle on things. And every time somebody make a suggestion to you, stop getting upset and wanna be argumentative about it. My, my thing is, I'm just telling you what I see. Now, I don't mind telling you what I saw. That's why I tried to meet with you. I tried to meet with you on Thursday. And I, I don't care what you were doing. Your, your, your assistant said that you weren't available to meet. That was fine. But I was trying to, so we, I, I've been trying to get along with you. And so all you wanna do is go back and forth. But if somebody says something, understand this, that when I see something, I'm trying, I try to pull you to the side to tell you. I don't wanna happen. Every time we get on a meeting, uh, the paper have a feel they were saying that we going back and forth, back and forth. Hey, man, I got a lot going on. I don't have time to argue with you. All I'm just trying to tell you is how to, how to correct some things. Uh, I'm pretty sure Ms. Davis and Ms. Crockett and Ms. Ford and Ms. Ethel and Ms. St. Columbia, we all have worked together to put some money for the grass cutting. So, you know, it, it's, it's up to you all. The, the city council put the budget together and we put, I think Ms. Davis answered, I think at least fifty thousand dollars to put into the budget for grass, cuz the contract that, if you, I mean, you know, it's a lot of people got loan boards and, and they're willing to help. I just wish that you would, every time somebody says something, you, you wanna argue back and forth. We could been done with these meetings. I'm just trying to see what I see. Yes, you got a lot of people who drive these cars back and forth to their homes, into the city. And the city spends a lot of money on gas. The gas is, is higher now, Mayor, than it was this time last year. And, and we, the, the trade just stated, we have, we have some cash on here. And let's try to keep it that way. That's all I'm saying. I don't wanna argue with you. Every time I, I talk, you, you feel like it's, I, I, I was like pulling teeth. And I'm not trying to give folks a show cuz I ain't in the entertainment business. I'm trying to make sure this city is better. And all I try to do is tell you, hey, this is what I see. But when I tell you that you get, you, you got, well, I don't wanna hear that. Well, you know, it is. I'm, I'm out riding when you ain't. So man, you know, i- if you take a ride and look at this city, Mr. Jones can't get it done by himself. Mr. Woback can't get it done by himself. Uh, Mr. Estrada, none of these people can get it done by itself. We had combined one, two cities into one. It should be a, a different structure. Hell of the same, hell of the same, a place where some employees come in to work on the hell of the grass. They're supposed to have, uh, in West Helen to work on e- e- both sides, man. That's all I've been trying to tell you. Is you could have some folks to come in and help us do this. Because right down here, in front of the Delta Coach Center, the city used to cut there. Well, you know what? The, the, the Delta Coach Center took over and started cutting themselves because they want to take, they have got what Oscar took the load off. They cut all this down here in front of the pavilion and stuff. The city used to cut all of this down there. But when Oscar, Oscar was there, he worked out a plan with the Delta Coach Center and Delta Coach Center cuts it. A lot of people will be willing to help you if you just, you know, I mean, open, open up your eyes, man. We all want hell to do good. A- a- anybody trying to pick an argument or fight with you? A- a- anybody trying to pick an argument or fight with you, if, if, if you. Open up your eyes and let people try to help you and show you because you can't do it all as a city council person. That's why five other people beside me on this board, uh, on the city council. They, they teaching me things that I didn't know and, and she did, the things they know. You as the mayor, you hadn't, you hadn't tried to have a meeting with us to say, hey, listen, we all a team. Four of the mayors have gotten, gotten with us. Told us, hey, this is where I wanna go. Can you all walk with me to get there? I'm tired of having to shout and mess with you. It's always Mr. Franklin or Calvin this. I, I'm trying to work with you, but every time it turns around, you gotta be right. I, I, I have, Mr. Jones, if he on the line, Mr. Jones, if I'm lying, you correct me. When y'all had the last Easter storm, didn't I damage my truck out here helping you all move all, all the debris?
Yeah, you did that. You done.
Did I, did I try to see that now?
Not that I, I don't know. Not that I know of.
I, I, cause I won't.
Let me say this, Frank. Let me say this, sir, if you don't mind. Now, that's an easy fix what you just brought up. Doing Mr. Valley, administration, uh, Jane Valley, he had a summer crew. He had, I think, ten part-time. Well, let's fix that problem tonight. Give me five.
Ms. John, we're not, Ms. John, see, that's what we're talking about. We, we not there yet. We ain't even there. We, we, yeah, yeah, I mean, you, you don't need, you, you. If, if you look in your budget, you, 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 we ain't gotta give you nothing. Look in your budget and see it's money allocated. And Mr. Mr. Turner's on the line. He, he, he can answer the question.
Mr. Please, Mr. Franklin, are you through your campaign speech?
I'm not, man. I, hey, listen.
You don't run this meeting, Mr. Franklin. You think you do, but you don't.
Well, how about this? How about this?
I'm gonna cut you off. You've had enough time. Please meet Mr. Franklin. Please meet. I'd buy the rules of a common, regular, ordinary meeting. Please be.
How can you mute? How can you mute me when I'm not, I'm not finished talking?
Because you don't go by the rules. You have to let other people talk and you have to stay.
But I had the floor. But I had the floor. I had the floor.
Question though, Mr. Franklin, just calm down. Everybody just calm down for one minute. Let me answer your question, Mr. Franklin. Derek Turner. Do I have?
But, 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 but wait a minute, but wait a minute. That's the thing.
All right, Mr. Turner, do you wanna answer the question about?
No, you should, no, you shouldn't. No, you shouldn't.
Franklin, would you please let somebody else talk beside yourself? Mr. Turner, would you? Mr. Franklin, you're not recognized. Please. Please restrain yourself so we can have a business meeting and conduct the business of this city. Mr. Turner, would you please answer Mr. Jones's question?
I'm asking you, I was told I had ten part-time in the budget for me to help, for, for the help cut, uh, grass. Do I have those? I hadn't seen it in the budget. As you heard, Mr. Franklin say, there's ten part-time employee. Is that true?
No, they discussed adding, uh, part-time people and I spoke with. A council member earlier today about that and I told them that. Just like this year, just like other years in the past, they always discuss it. But when it comes to actually putting it in the budget, it's never done. And so it wasn't done this year either.
Mr. Turner, I got one more question. How long have I been coming in front of the council asking for ten part-time employees? At one while, Mr. Andre Valley had intervened and say, this is how his brother done it. How many times have I asked from the council? I want you to answer that question for me, Mr. Turner, and ask for ten times, uh, ten, huh?
I don't know exactly how many times, and I don't know exactly how many people you asked for, right off the top of my head, but I know you've. Come before the council several times, asking for, uh, can the city council provide part-time laborers for you?
Can you tell me what happened? Okay. Can you tell me what?
I mean, they discussed and, uh, for one rea- uh, I can't think of the specific reasons why they don't grant it. But for whatever reason, for some reason or another, they, they just never get around to doing it. But I know you've come to the council several times. You've come to the council several times and asked for some, uh, part-time labor.
Now, everyone knows how I feel about the beautification of this city. So there's no way. That if we can afford, we could afford it, I would say, no, don't give that to Mr. Jones. No, he doesn't need that. I, I, me personally, you all know how I feel about it. Many people as, as we possibly could, could afford, just to. Because I know it needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am. I know you would have, Ms. David. But again, I wanna ask Mr. Turner this question. What happened, Mr. Turner, when I asked for those ten employees?
Uh, like I said, Mr. Jones, I don't know exactly what the reason was. I mean, it may have been at that, at that particular time. It just they, we weren't financially able to do it. Mr. Jones, I wanna address Ms. Davis.
Can you recall, you told me to work with what I got?
Let me, let me interrupt for a minute and ask this question.
Can I address Ms. Davis?
We are fin- we are financially in better shape now and I'd like to ask Mr. Jones, first of all, what you need. From the city to help with grass cutting and lot mowing, vacant lots. And then ask Mr. Valley and Mr. Turner, we can, how we do that legally. And it's approved and also ask Mr. Turner, maybe it should be the other way around. If we can afford to do that, Mr. Valley, how we do that tonight, if that's possible.
Okay, now let me ask my question because I have basically the same question, the same question that you have. I want to ask Mr. Jones, how can the city council help?
Okay, I, I answer that for you.
This, before you go on, is it that for new hires? Is it for summer hires or is it? Do we need to contract the work out?
Well, right now, Ms. David, you got a lot of people in applying for jobs. I think I, the way to save money, our best way to go out on this is to contract the grass. Some of it. We would even work with the crew. We need to contract the grass. I'm asking the council, let, let's not keep waiting. Let's do it tonight.
Mr. Mayor, could I say something?
Yes, Ms. St. Columbia.
Uh, over the years, and, and of course, I guess I'm the oldest one on this council. But I can recall many years in the past, and I think Mr. Turner will agree with me. That we have during the summer, uh, brought in extra help, uh, and hired extra people. To help us, uh, even tear down houses, cut grass, uh, clean the city. And I'm, uh, like Ms. Davis, we need to clean this city up. We, we need to do everything we can. Uh, and in the past years, during the summer, we have, uh, employed extra people. And I think we need to endorse Mr. Jones's idea and let him, allow him to employ other people. Uh, using the minimum wage if we have to, uh, whatever, to, to extra help. There especially in the, in the grass cutting season and time we need it. Uh, and allow him to do the job that we expect him to do. I wanna say this one other thing. I have caught him, uh, Mr. Jones out on a truck picking up the garbage. I've seen him do a lot of things that we could hire people to do and he's doing it himself, uh, and. Like he said earlier, he did do some demolition work down there. But we need to, we need to employ extra people and we have done this in the past, in the past years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have to say.
I, I don't have a problem with it. I would, I mean, gladly, if we can afford it and I'm sure some of the other council members agree. But this is probably the first year that I have not spoken. When we did budget workshops, we talked about the budget. Back in December or January, I've always said, other than this year, about hiring extra people in the summer. So I don't know where that came from, where they, you know, the council turned it down. I don't know, maybe I missed that meeting, but I, 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 I've always been for that. I see, I ride, I see, I know it's raining, I know it's wet. I know it's hard to, once you get started, it's raining again. I know, you know, this is the season. But it's, it's, I feel like it's either, it's, and I know you all work hard, but I feel like it's too much for you all to handle. I do. People are contracting it out. And another thing I wanna ask about is the spraying. Is it possible to, is it too late or is it? Possible to cut the lots, the, the vacant lots and spray so that the grass doesn't grow? I know that has happened in the past.
Well, we just sprayed, we just sprayed, uh, Friday, Ms. David, and I got a gentleman now gonna be spraying again. Most of these major ditches on West Street and all that, he'll be back thirsty. Again, that'll take a lot off us. But now you have. When we brought it up last year, when we brought it up the first of this year, you have said, give Mr. Jones some help. Even Andre have said. He went all the way back, even the mayor have said.
Let me, let me stop there and ask, um, Mr. Turner. If, um, if we can find a place in the budget to. Appropriate that money for the summer part-time help for mowing.
Y- yes, sir. Let me, let, let, uh, before I get started with that, I, I kinda wanna clarify. When I initially, when I said that Mr. Jones had been requesting the part-time people, and I said for whatever reason. That the council, it wasn't given, more than likely, and I, I like to clarify, more than likely, it was because we just didn't have the funding. Uh, I don't know specifically why, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's probably why we just didn't have the money at the time. Currently, and, 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 and that's just to say that, that, that I know Mrs. Davis has been adamant since I've been. Twenty fifteen about getting back the grass. I mean, that's the first thing. I, I know that that's her. Thing. That's what she's always talking about, the, the, the. And so for whatever reason, like I said, I can't just recall exactly, but I'm pretty sure it has something to do with the finances. Besides that, uh, like I said earlier and, and, uh, going over the treasurer's report. Uh, there is a budget surplus of, um. I think I said two hundred and forty-eight. Two hundred and forty-eight, little over two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. It's a budget surplus that can be used for appropriations. I, I, I've spoken with Ms. Davis, I've spoken with Ms. Ford. The problem that we will have, and Mr. Franklin as well, the problem that we've had. That we've always come to when we get to the budget workshops is how do you want to do it? So do you just want to, like Ms. Davis said, do you wanna get additional employees? Do you wanna get part-time people? Do you wanna go through a temp? How do you wanna do it? And you never, and, uh, they never quite decide on how they wanna do it. And so that's what you kinda need to decide. You can just say how much, but you kinda need to know how.
Let me ask this. I'm sorry for interrupting, but, and this is just my thought. Wouldn't it be better to like probably contract this out to someone so we won't be responsible for insurance? That would be our best out.
For today and she kinda said the same, and Ms. Ford had the same, uh, thought that you had. And so I, I agree with you on that.
Let, let's, let Mr. Jones decide what he needs to do.
And Mr. Jones can decide, but it's okay to give suggestions, uh, Mr. St. Columbia, because my thing is. If in, like I'm agreeing with Ms. uh, Quocket, if somebody else, if it was contracted out then. They would be responsible for certain lots or certain things and they will, you know, every two weeks.
I agree, I agree.
He's the ultimate decision maker.
That the previous policy was this, that you had a particular timeframe, I think it was either sixteen weeks or twenty weeks or so. That you have part-time people work less than twenty-four hours per week. And I think that's, I think that's how the city has done it in the, in the past. Uh, but it was, it was only for, um, a limited number of weeks and it was twenty-four hours or less. Uh, uh, Madam, uh, City Clerk would be more familiar. I think that, uh, that was a policy, I think the council that voted on it back then. Uh, but that is suggested, if you wanna contract it, uh, you'd have to take bids and et cetera as to. How, how much you gonna do and for how long you gonna do that. It's really a financial issue as to how you all do it. Base pay does not apply to this if you were doing, uh, because base pay applies to full-time employees as well as. Uh, elected official. It, it does, it does not go towards the. The part-time people and it will be up to the city council, what will be the starting salary if you did it? Well, there's minimum wage, what's this twelve dollar, whatever it is, uh, as to how you, how you would do it. Uh, but what has worked, as I said, for years, what worked this is how, hiring us to people. If you wanna contract, that's fine. It's a simple financial issue as to what, which way you wanna do it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Valley. I, I, I recommend that we contract.
Now, but both are gonna have their, their time delay. Cause you contract, you gotta do compared to, you gotta do bid and all that. You're doing employee, you gotta advertise. So both of them have time delay built in it. I just wanna remind all of those.
Mr. Valley. Is, I was just trying to bring that up because if we did contracts. Then you're gonna, you're gonna delay this process. A long time. And it might not seem like it, uh, but it does. And I'm not against it. It's just that. If you're impatient for mountain, mowing the grass, I mean, this is, the, the spring is when people notice the most because of all the rains. And the grass is wet. If you have a front yard, you can get out that afternoon and mow it. But if you've got the city of Helen West Hana, you can't do that one afternoon. And it's not easy and it's, it is a chore and it's a lot of work. I'd say the first year I was mayor anyway, we were broke. Um, we didn't have the money. The second year, most of the last years, we had a combination of, of pandemic. Um, and a difficulty of hiring people and we had some financial issues still we were concerned about. We can't afford to do it now and the pandemic's subsiding. And I would, I don't know, Mr. Valley, it's my question to you is what is the? My, my concern is less whether it's contracted. Is there, is there a way to do this expeditiously? So that Mr., so that the city can be assured first of all, that the money is being spent appropriately. And at the same time, not delay it. Is there a way to do that?
Uh, one or two ways. I mean, the, the city council can do a one-time waiver of compared to bidding for. If you all have a contract you wanna use and the city council is fine with that to get it done. Or the city council can do a one-time waiver of the, uh, you can do the public cases and say the mayor is authorized on this one case. To hire quicker than, than normally what the policy has. Uh, you can get a waiver from the city council, either one. I don't know, I don't know. Well, I have a time for positions, you know, you gotta, you gotta do the ten-day notice and et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'd declare an emergency, but I don't know if I've ever heard of a mayor declaring a grass cutting emergency before.
Well, can I ask you, if it ain't over five thousand dollars when you're contracting, do we still have to bid it up?
Well, the problem is what Franklin says, it's gonna be over five thousand dollars, cause five thousand dollars was just probably cut the first. The few cuts, it ain't gonna, it ain't gonna cover the whole sum. And then you're getting into serial contracts.
Okay, even with different vendors?
It's, it's, it's the, it is what you're doing and that's, that's what, that's what Franklin keep bringing up. Uh, it is overall, we're bidding for the grass cutting and that's the one area that you're dealing with. And it's clear that you're dealing with one area. And so, uh, if we engage in a series of smaller contracts. You've, you've engaged in serial contracting versus one large contract.
What do you recommend?
Either way, the city council wants to, if, if, if city council wanna put notices out and then they waive the bidding and hire one contractor. And, uh, the mayor select the contractor based on the, uh, cause the mayor ultimately chooses to be it. Way city council would have to waive bid. Or the city council wanna do a one-time waiver of the, of, of the delayed hiring process and do the. And do this one time, uh, declare emergency and do it that way for grass, they could do that as well. Uh, I don't know which one the city council is comfortable with, whether you just want the mayor to go ahead and hire five employees, ten employees, et cetera. Or do you want to do a contract?
But when you say one time, is that for the summer or, or just one contract job?
Well, the competitive bidding would be one time, that'd be contract for the whole summer.
But that's what all we need.
Well, I'm telling you both sides. I'm talking about the employee, please, you have a big policy that requires advertising. Before was specific, a specific amount of time. And so, the, the thing I was saying is, they can waive that under emergency circumstances, but they have to be clear just this one time. They're doing it, cause our policy will remain in place. So, six in one hand have done another, which, which one does this council prefer?
Well, I would recommend to the council, they do it for this one time, uh, 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 and go ahead and let me hire a crew now.
I agree with that. That sounds reasonable.
Uh, can I add, Mr. Jones, do you have for, for, uh, any additional employees? Do you have the, do you have all the equipment that you need?
No, we, this contract work, Mr. Turner.
Now, you said you want to get a, when you say.
I don't want to do the employee, because like I said. A crew, a contract work.
Oh, okay.
Well, Mrs. Jones, if you want the council to approve, we need information. We need to know, there has to be something that you and the mayor do, begin to do some type of. Information to get information to the city council, cause they can't just approve, okay, just go out and hire anybody. We gotta know, the people have to know what their bid now, gotta know how many lots they cut, and how often they cut, all those things. All those contracts, have to get the information to the mayor expeditiously, so you can move forward.
Okay, well, I can have that ready, but, uh, like I say, I don't want to wait another two weeks to do this. I mean, is it, I, I can get this ready in three, two days. I mean, if we can call a special call meeting, I don't want to wait till the next council member to get this done. As you see now, it's in front of the council now.
Well, Mrs. Jones, I don't know if two days is practical for people to evaluate every lot that they're gonna cut. And you to get a, 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 a good, uh, uh, amount of people to actually, uh, bid on it, cause.
No, I thought you said it, uh, submit the information, Mr. Valley.
Right, right, oh, you talking about information, that, I'm talking about actual people who had the capacity to do it.
No, 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 I was talking about submitting the information.
Mr. Valley, I have, I have a quick question for you.
The shot thinking, I have to know how much you're gonna spend, I mean, how much you gonna?
So, the, the, the state limit on, on, on the mayor spending is twenty thousand. The city ordinance said, or code says five thousand. So my question is, if the city suspended that to be no more than the state minimum. One time only, for the purposes of grass cutting only. Is that enough? Is twenty thousand dollars enough? Or maybe even, and if that's not enough, we could do that, we could do something else again.
Well, Mayor, I can make that work with that twenty thousand dollars. At least I can get them started and get something done. I can make it work. Just starting out with that twenty thousand dollars, but like I say, this gonna go on and on and on. If we don't do something tonight, we're gonna wait another two weeks, brain is back in front of the council.
Mr. Jones, you, do you feel like the twenty thousand is enough money to do the job with?
It, 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 it will help.
I think you put.
I'm not gonna say that's gonna be enough, it's enough to get them started.
Okay, I have a question. My question is, we're talking about twenty thousand dollars. We, we don't have any definition of, if he gonna cut lot twenty-four on Jane Street and twenty-seven on Mayor Street. And we don't have a description of what that twenty thousand dollars will be entail. I think what the question is now is, that Mr. Jones get the lots, that he's gonna want to contract out, cause I know the city's gonna still do some of them. Needs to get a list of the ones that he's tried to contract out. And then him and the mayor get together and try to find somebody to see what the bid is. We need some, we can't just give you no, but, well, I'm not willing to give you a blank.
Right, and the other part about it is, do a, a reasonable contract and a reasonable bid, where everybody know what you're bidding on. Uh, we have, and what all, what all pieces of property that couldn't, how often you expect them to be cut. I said, that's, 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 that's a part of the overall process. Now, I understand too, is this. Is, uh, it's gonna be people who are grass cutting, people that gonna be it. Heck, twenty thousand dollars is a people that basically, I go buy me some iron boards and bid, this.
Yes, sir.
It's one of those, it's one of those things that, that, that you have to look at all parameters, and I understand you, your, your need to operate quickly. But, uh, we also need to make sure we get it right, and so. Uh, I think that was on the first thing I have to do, if y'all looking at doing the contract, uh, the first thing. Look at what all you're trying to get them to do. Are you going relations to parks to them and let them cut all that? Are you looking at lots? What's the most, what would help your department the most, and which lots needs to be done? I think you start from there, then work your way into that, and then you and America can get together. And, and then we can solicit, uh, something. But also, we have to advertise for that as well, as, uh, even though you're waiting compared to bidding, there has to be something to tell people. Hey, we're about to let a contract for this amount of money for cutting grass. That don't cut, finally would be like, hey, I come question grass, what I need to do, and I, I cut it, I cut it all summer long.
But for the record.
We, we have to.
Go ahead, I apologize, I'm sorry.
I'm done, go, go ahead.
And most of this that. Yeah, all, most, what we doing is, uh, uh, this contract job on, this is all private property. A majority of this is, is just completely private property, Mr. Valley, that we got to cut. I mean, we've been going on from you for the, now, two and a half years with private property, but I ain't cutting it, y'all.
Now, if we're gonna do this on private property, the one thing we also need to do as part of the, as part of the contract, Mayor, uh. They need to keep up with what they did, how many cuts, and how much they charging us each one of these lots. Cause then we can move forward to the lien process. If you couldn't, I issue that I have as city attorney is, I'm not getting all the documents. To prove how to be cutting, what manpower we using, what we doing so we can take it to the next level and get the links, and that's what we need.
So are we gonna, are we gonna settle on twenty thousand dollars as a, as an amount?
No, we're not settling on an amount. He has to get all the property, cause twenty thousand dollars, if, it might not be enough. So I think that what, what, what we basically saying is, if he, he's gonna try to get a list of the properties between now and Friday. Then give the, you know, like Mr. Valley said, sometimes it has to be advertised some kind of way.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying it doesn't, I just want, I mean.
Well, I tell you what, let, let, let Emman there give you a list of the property. And, uh, or present that, cause, you know, like I say, I would, I, I would participate in this. But let him give you a list, cause he's more familiar with this, going to the courthouse. Getting a, 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 a property owner name and all that address, people that, majority of these people dead, some living out of state. So, Emman, and, 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 and Mr. Greg is familiar with this. But I can give you the address, I can go right, I can go and tell you every lot that need to be cut.
That's what I'm saying, I think that's what we're asking, we need lots to know what lots that you're wanting to contract out to somebody. And to relieve the city of doing that, so that the city can attend to the cities, you know, whatever they have to cut.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just think we need to do this ASAP, because this town looks a mess.
Well, that, let me say something about this. I, I think we're really bogging this down in details. I, I think, you know, frankly, all, all it needs is an appropriation. Uh, which can be done pretty simply, because a lot.
No, Mayor, you can't do that, then we'll be in, 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 in some law. That can't be done like that, just, the attorney just told you that.
Well, now, what the attorney said was, it can't be a serial contract and has to be under five thousand dollars, or the other things are true. And if, if we're only talking about private property, we put lien, some of people, some of these folks pay. Uh, also, then you, you're talking about something that I'm afraid we're gonna get bogged down into an awful lot.
Don't take time.
Take anything but, but an appropriation for us to do, uh, as long as we don't, um. As long as we keep what Mr. Valley said about, uh, serial contracts and spending limits. And I, you know, five thousand dollars is a lot of money for grass. Um, but is the appropriation there, would be my question, is it there now? I don't think it is, but i- is it there now, Mr. Turner? That's the big question. So really, the question tonight would be to appropriate a, a figure of money. Under which the laws would have to be obeyed on the serial contracts, five thousand dollars and seventy-five hundred. If it gets to the point where it's over that for one vendor, or whatever stipulations Mr. Valley wants to put on that, then I think it needs to be. A council decision, but it doesn't all have to be, not every single lot and every single mower. To point out to you that, uh, the Helena River Park was mowed, what, a week ago, Bobby? It's already, so when we say lots, you're also being able to talk about how fast it grows. Did it rain?
It ain't even been a week ago, it was last Wednesday, well, yeah, yeah, but, yeah, or last Wednesday.
We're kind of getting into the, literally getting into the weeds. I mean, the, these things, these places are fertilized differently, they're different, I mean, grow at different rates. So one lot might need to be cut twice in a, in, in a ten-day period, fourteen-day period, and, and another one might not be able, not be required to be. Mowed again for a month, depending on where you are. So, I mean, we're gonna getting into some real micromanagement, and I think all that, we probably need at least to get this started. So that we don't have to put this off again, is an appropriation to make this legal. And then maybe clarification from Mr. Valley to make sure there's no serial contracts. Uh, and if there is anything that is in danger of that, then we bring it back to the council. To me, that's all you need to do tonight. The rest of it can be dealt with, or at least started on. Five thousand dollars is not a lot of money for grass cutting, so, the science.
I, I, I do want to say this, I mean, do y'all know how many employees we have working Helena and West Hauler? Labor helpers, cutting grass. Do any council member know?
Probably about ten.
Six. Now, what can you get done with six employees? Then some days you got to take them off, do potholes, dig out ditches or drains. What can you get done in one summer with six employees? Anybody got an answer for me? And I'm pushing those guys, I am pushing them. Ain't getting paid, excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry, and then ain't getting paid for letting dogs know.
And, and I agree with all that, but for tonight's discussion, I, I really think. An appropriation is the, is the best way to start. The, the rest of this can also happen. The lots and the, all the rest of the things that we've talked about can happen simultaneously. But you don't necessarily have to have, um, a lot of that to get some of this done. And what you do have to have is an appropriation, cause I can't, we can't do anything without that. So I, I would ask the council if anybody is interested in, uh, making an appropriation for gas cutting. In addition to what is in the budget. And stipulate that if any, if there was any risk that there might be a violation of, uh, serial contracts. They'd be brought, uh, for the council for proceeds. I think a lot of grass could be cut and that records be kept and turned over to Mr. Valley as he's stated. Uh, I think we can do this without waiting much, you know, other more weeks and for more paperwork and all that. What I can't do is appropriate is, is spend money that's not appropriate. So go back, Mr. Jones recently asked and complained in not getting su- support for additional grass cutting. What he really needs is an appropriation for additional grass cutting. Is there anybody who wants to make an emotion on that?
I don't mind making an appropriation, I don't know what the amount needs to be.
Well, a- again, Miss Dave, we can start off with that twenty. I'll make it work. I mean, I live here too. If that twenty is all I can get for right now to beautify this city, to help out, and guess what? I would get out with that twenty thousand dollars y'all give for us to get people out, to contract this work out. I would still would be participating and out cutting myself too, along with them. Not just my crew, I'm gonna be out with them. I mean, what more can you ask for? That's all I ask, give me something to work with.
I would like to turn that over to the contractors, and I would like for you to work with the stuff.
Most definitely, I would do that. That's all I need.
Can we do that, and when we get to the point where, where you stipulate that you think it's a serial contract or, or violation? Or might become a violation of the limitations.
Wait, is he saying twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, but.
Yes.
Not, not, not in one, not in one check.
I, I think you froze.
Not with, not with one contract. The, the question is, you know, it needs to be appropriated in the budget. And then we didn't have to stay under five thousand dollars and within your limitations on serial contracts. Uh, but we can get that started and send you the list of everything that gets cut, and how much time it took, which is how they figure out. And.
Well, he, he, here's a simple thing, to simplify what you're saying. If the council just proposed a five thousand dollars, that wouldn't be a serial contract, cause you, you'd be able to spin up to five thousand dollars. If you go five thousand dollars, then that's what kicks in, series of spending over five thousand dollars and being a serial contract. So if they appropriate up to five thousand dollars, you could just contract five thousand dollars without having to do the bidding or any of that. But once you hit the five thousand dollar threshold, both the serial bidding and, both the serial contracts. And we begin to look at spending over five thousand dollars would kick in. Five thousand dollars, I don't think you're doing, you're making appropriation, and they can start hiring people, uh, to cut grass, that's tomorrow, if that what you want to do. Uh, if you made the appropriation, uh, but if it's, uh, if it's over, if it's over the, uh. Five thousand, you require bidding. If it's over five thousand, uh, the serial contract also would kick in. But if it's under five thousand, it's a matter of appropriation and going forward to, to answer the mayor's question.
So I would have to come, come back next two weeks and ask for five thousand more. But like I say, I'm not gonna prolong, just keep going on, on and on with this. I want to get started tomorrow if I can. If it take that five thousand dollars, once again, on the record.
One thing that you could do, that, that you could, you can, you can, you can split the baby and satisfy both sides. The council can appropriate five, up to five thousand dollars, and then you also can appropriate, we gonna bid the other fifteen, if you appropriate twenty. And we're gonna do bids and all that, and while you're doing the bidding for the main contract, uh, you could just start doing the cutting under the five thousand. If, if that's what, if, if that's what gets you all there, that's, that's a way of doing it, and you're addressing both the serial contract and the bidding. And you're giving the right to go forward and start cutting as soon as it stops raining. I think it's supposed to rain again, uh, this week. Yes, sir.
That sounds like a, a plan.
I'm fine with it, ma'am.
So, but, but I said was this, you would, you would appropriate the five thousand dollars by motion. And then in a second motion, what you would do is, you would, you would. And then in a second motion, what you would do is you would, you would appropriate another fifteen thousand dollars. But that would be for the purpose of bid, and you have to go through the bidding process with, with, with the mayor, uh, as relates to that. You're also, uh, can authorize, ma'am, that fifteen thousand dollars to still go through and do a competitive bidding way go choose, once he gets more information. I understand time is of the essence, but we're trying to tailor a way for you to start cutting immediately, and for you to address the bidding and getting advertised and all that done. He's still about to do some advertising for the other fifteen thousand, if you appropriate twenty thousand.
I, I think we can do that, don't you, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Now, what about us bidding tomorrow? Can we start a bid process tomorrow? Well, you have to draft the bid in the lots, you, uh, it would, it would be next Wednesday, be able to get in the paper. Yes, sir. It'll be a week. I, I, I think Mr. Bagley, Mr. Kennedy, it would be at least a week of whoever else to have paneling that. It'll be at least a week with local paper. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to that?
No, mo.
Ms., Ms. Davis. I'm gonna try to say this correctly. Ms. Davis, um, may's appropriation.
Total appropriation, total appropriation is twenty thousand dollars, with five thousand dollars being available immediately, and the other fifteen thousand being, uh, uh, for purpose of bidding.
Second.
Who's, who's second in the motion?
Ms. Crockett.
Ms. Crockett, second in the motion. Any questions about the motion? On minutes.
All right.
Call her. Don't call the Robbins.
Uh, Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin? Etherly?
Yes.
Ford? Four, yes, two absent.
And motion passes. All right, uh, Mr. Jones, thank, thank you. So while we're on that, um, we're on your, your information. Would you wanna give an update on the boom low, the boom truck from Ms. Davis?
Yes, sir. We had two employees out on Medical League. Uh, we, Mr. Ro- uh, one employee come back Monday. Came back Monday, yes, Monday, Mr. Rowmac. And what we did today, we didn't go back and try to start off, you know, go back and backtrack. What we did, we came, he started Monday, they got on a regular route, so we should be back on track in about another week or so. I mean, we, we, we just gonna start with the regular route instead of going ba- backwards.
Okay, and you all are doing certain days for certain streets and certain areas, right?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Davis. We doing, you're doing your regular garbage pickup would be your regular boom, uh, trash pickup too.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, all right, next time, any other questions about the boom truck?
Move on.
And, and let me ask a question. Now, you said the regular garbage truck day is the regular boom truck, cause that, you, that-
They run the same route. They run the same route, Ms. Davis.
Cause mine used to be a Monday and a Wednesday, so it's, it's different now. It's, it's-
On Monday, if, if you had a crew come through there on Monday, that's just an extra day. We don't have a route on Monday.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna give a very brief animal control thing, and then we'll move on. Uh, the, basically, the, this foundation and the Humane Society of Tulsa came last week and uh, spayed and neutered us several hundred dogs and cats, and, um, they also removed several, about three hundred from the Humane Society of Delta uh, several, a couple of months ago. They've been incredibly helpful to our animal control problem here. Um, we continue to span native strays and, uh, other animals that cause uh, big population on our streets. The biggest issue that we have, um, is to place for containment, uh, so that we can comply with local laws. We haven't had that for many, many years here. The agreement that existed with the Humane Society for the Delta expired a long time ago. So really, there hasn't been an adequate program in place for a long time. So, uh, we are in the process of weaving, uh, uh, Mr. Williams, Mr. Jones, uh, Reg- Reginald Wilson, and some others in looking at how the most efficient, effective way we can create an enclosure system that's safe, humane, uh, protected from any kind of outside intrusions, you know, cut, cut the locks and that kind of stuff. Uh, so that we can comply with state law, as we should be able to, and then other organizations can can, can certainly after that period of time, uh, I guess it's something really that'll be spoken at that point, but, uh, but the bottom line is the city has to comply with state law, and, and since the agreement with Humane Society for the Delta expired or stopped years ago, it really hasn't been in position to do that. So we're trying to get us back in that position. And I hope by this fall, maybe we will, and we'll have a, a better update for you on that. All right, Helena Crossing issues, um, during, um, Ms., Mr. Jones is out here, but let me discuss, we have meeting, we had several meetings in Helena Crossing. They, they did, like most of the city, they need ditches cleaned out, um, they have problems with flooding, mud. Uh, they have some code issues with what was the, like, the, uh, sorry, the Helena Crossing school and ditch behind it. Um, we had a meeting with some of the, the people there. I've been there, I don't know how many times. We had a meeting at, uh, PLM and the center there, and we're gonna try to have another follow-up. Um, I just wanted to bring that up on the, uh, agenda. Excuse me, because it's come up several times from people that live in that area, and I don't want them to think that we don't take their issues seriously. Um, some of the issues, what I tell them I would do, I've done. The big issue is flooding, um, that really comes from historic flooding on the Mississippi River that backs up the waterways that would naturally drain, and that gives the effect of the river going, or the water going sort of upriver against the normal tide, and that's because it's being backed up at the Mississippi. What they really need is a pump station. It's very expensive, and I've talked to Congressman Crawford and Senator Bozeman about getting help for something like that. Landowners in that area have offered to pay the operating cost of something like that, because they all suffer too. But it would also have the benefit of preventing this flooding in Helena Crossing. The ditches, what I've said, I've had to say a lot. I can help with this. We can, the city can help with the symptoms, but we can't cure that disease, um, that problem is really caused by the Mississippi River, and a lot of money has been spent dealing with the symptoms. And that's just a maintenance issue, kinda like you would if you were sick and you have to do a lot to, uh, to, to, to stay, uh, healthy. And, uh, that's a longer term fix. We're still talking about symptoms, really. But we, I just really wanted to brief you on it, because we've had meetings on, down there. There's a lot of concern about it. And we're not done with that. But I thought, Ms. Jones, you wanna add anything? There's really nothing else.
Well, while we're talking about these ditches, there's one on Newman Drive. I'm not sure, I can't remember the man's name. I haven't wrote down. But the last time we got that big rain, his house came within like three inches. He said that he's talked to y'all about this before, and no one is, they keep telling that they're trying to give an estimate. I think his name is Newsom. I think, I'm not sure. But it's on Newman Drive. If you're coming from the hospital, it's right on the right hand side, the last house on the right hand side before you get to the stop sign. So I would like somebody to please just look at that, uh, to see what we can do, because his shop in his house were near the flood.
Ragsdale, maybe?
Who?
Mr., is it Mr. Ragsdale?
No, that's not his name.
I, I, I know, that's not the right name.
I thought his name was Jaren Newsom.
Dunlap.
Dun, no, I don't think that's him.
That, I believe that's, and Mr. Jones is kind of familiar with it. We, we did get an estimate. It was over ten thousand dollars, I believe, Mr. Jones. Um, to fix that problem, which is something only the city council could approve. Jesse Dunlap.
I've never heard anybody say anything about.
Well, we just got that estimate from Mr. Money Maker, and Mr. Jones was looking into the alternative ways to do something that's not as expensive. And I didn't know about it myself until, I don't know, it might be another, a couple of months ago, when I spoke to him. Mr. Jones, you still on? You, you know what she's talking about, what Ms. Crockett's talking about? You still on, Mr. Jones? I don't know, we might have lost him, but, um, he's met, Mr. Jones has been out there and met with him. Um, also, and, um, and I've spoken with him, and Mr. Jones was in the process of trying to figure out if there was a better way to do this without spending over ten thousand dollars. And we got the one estimate, so it'd be good to get another estimate if it's gonna go to the council. And that's where that is. Um, we have tremendous number of drainage issues. The big ditch that runs behind and, and near that property, um, that give you, you know, the prison, the prisoners that you used to say work in, uh, that program was suspended under the pandemic. Well, I'm county mayor, there are many, many lists of pro- long lists of projects that were on there ahead of us, because county judges and many people can request those. Then they suspended the program. That ditch that, that's right there on Newman Drive, that's overgrown, that's, that's a city ditch, at least until past, uh, that property you're talking about. And, uh, so anyway, I got a request into, that they just recently said that they're about to reopen the prison worker program. Um, and do we have any projects? And that's the, the first item that I asked them to do. Of course, we have many others, but remember, uh, West Street being another one. Um, I can mention a lot of, of the, the, what amounts to really the drainage areas for the Helena Improvement District need to be done, and they don't have the money at the Helena Improvement District, whether they think it's, uh, Mr. St. Columbia was on here. Whether they think it's their job or not is irrelevant, because they don't have enough money to do it. And it needs to be done one way or another. So those are projects that are on that list, but, uh, the one on Nauman Drive is, is the top one. So they haven't indicated to me when they can do that. All we have to do is buy the lunches. And, uh, that's not gonna directly help, miss, uh, Mr. Dunlap, but it, it affects that entire area of town. Now, if that answers your question or not. But the, any other thing on the Helena Crossing issue? I, I will say, we're, we're trying to also see if we can find, I'm saying this publicly, because if anybody knows, uh, anybody, hey, we contract with, um, ditches, uh, we'll bring it back to the council, but right now, I just appreciate the vendors who can do it. And one of the things I don't think gets appreciated is how hard it is to get people to do this, even when you do contract, and maybe grass will be different, and I hope so, because that's a, a different area, but when you're talking about equipment, uh, we don't have the adequate equipment either, not for ditches, and I am actively trying to locate vendors who can do it and will do it, who will bid on it, that I can bring to the council so that we can do a better job on these ditches. A lot of, or actually state ditches, Fourth Street, Sebastian, um, Spring Beck, Springtown, uh, Highway forty-nine, Biscayne, Columbia, there are a lot of dishes, people are in mowing and, uh, actually litter control. All of that really is state. They just, um, we end up doing it, and Mr. Jones around here, he'd tell you, we end up doing a lot of that ourselves, because it doesn't get done, and people think it's us. And we still end up doing a lot of it anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just thought, just came to me, and re- in past years, we have brought in prisoners, cause they need, uh, uh, sometimes, we need to bring in some extra help, and it's something that maybe, uh, uh, work that, uh, uh, we need on some of the streets and roads, uh, and, uh, yeah, that, that's a thought, that if you need some extra labor, we could bring prisoners in, and, uh, all we had to do is feed them that day, you know? On specific jobs.
We just discussed it.
Well.
We just discussed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Miss St. Columbia, just while you were away, I just mentioned that, and we did, but they just reopened that program. They suspended it during the pandemic. And I was explaining how they just reopened it, or announced they were going to, and asked for projects, and I got us in there pretty fast. And the Nauman Drive issue is one of the, is the top request on our list, West Street, all the rest. Okay, I'm sorry, let's move on if there's no objection to new employees, uh, requests by Ms. Davis. And there's, uh, something in your packet created by Ms. Halbert on the Nauman Irish. Ms. Davis? Do you have any questions or?
That, um, I appreciate you all for calling my name, but that was not a request of mine. I don't know who requested that. Ms. Halbert, or Ms. Sandy, I don't know who did that.
Well, I mean, just thank Ms. Davis, uh, let me correct direct on that, and find that that list is in your, in your packet, so. On this side, is, is anybody have a question about it, I mean? Um, okay, well, if you do have any questions, they come to you later, feel free to call us or email us. All right, um, I don't know if Reggie Wilson is on, is, or Mr. Jones, are y'all on?
He, he's, uh, he's here. Hold on a second.
So there's, the issue is, there he is. Um, I don't know if Mr. Jones is on or not, or getting back on, but the issue is, is essentially that, uh, uh, we have been leasing, um, a dump truck that has costs as approximately five or six thousand dollars a, a week. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
And it's pointed out that we could buy one cheaper than that, so that's the issue. Mr. Wilson, you wanna add to that?
Well, we've, uh, actually, this, I, it's, uh, going over the equipment out there, we're having problems with, uh, dump truck and one of the, uh, dozers, but the issue with the dump truck, the leasing of the dump truck, uh, we are paying a enormous amount every month. I mean, every week for the lease on this dump truck, and we could, we've probably halfway paid for uh, a used dump truck anyway, so I, uh, got with the dealer, and we found a, a dump truck that we can pay for a month, and we can send him that lease back. That would, with the savings of probably fifteen thousand dollars a month.
And so what would be required is, uh, so what you're asking, so we're, we're asking the council its approval to, um,
Send the lease back and, and to donate.
And appropriation for the dump truck, and then Mr. Valley's gonna say that, you know, they something to, like, bet the bidding, I imagine, Mr. Valley?
Right. Yes, I am. I, I, I don't have the information. If, if, if Mr. Mr. Wilson could get it to me, then, uh, we, we could draft something, uh. Uh, who was the company, Mr. Wilson?
Riggs.
It's Caterpillar, uh, Jonesboro.
Riggs, yeah.
Okay, if you would, if you would, uh, text me the, the address and the name and the amount that we're, we're doing this for, I can, I can begin to draft that.
I can get you all the information, the, uh, the, uh- I can get you all the information, the, uh, the, uh, city treasurer has the information, whether he's looked over it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Questions from members of the council? I'll just say, we started to lease that equipment, which was buried back a long time ago, to close one of our cells and open our new cell. And so once that cell was closed and new cell opened, we continued to use it and, and thanks, Mr. Wilson, for looking into that, realized that we, we could be buying one for what we're leasing one for, so. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. But any other questions or any questions? So, Mr. Valley, you gonna work on that while we move on to the next thing?
If, if they give me the information, I, I will, they email it to me, I can work on it.
Okay.
Sir, I can have it. You can get it from, uh, the treasurer. He will, uh, send it to you ASAP. He'll send it to you right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Wilson. So while y'all are doing that, we'll, we'll move on down unless there are other questions. Thank, thank Commissioner Wilson. So we're gonna move to Parks and Recreation. The, the only thing I have there, well, I say the only thing, the I would like to recommend that the council consider, we've had Ms. Sharon Moore, as y'all know, last couple of meetings, talking about Parks and Recreation. In fact, I think we have a grants meeting tomorrow. Or this week, anyway. The, basically, the recommendation that she came up with, and I guess Solomon's came up with, is that we need a deputy director for Parks and Recreation and probably some, another employee. That I believe should still be under Public Works. I don't guess it has to be. But that would, that would be a decision of the council, really. And so I really just wanted to introduce that tonight and see if y'all had any feedback on it. I, I don't have anything about salaries. I, I don't believe that it would need to be the same as other deputy directors or anything like that. I, I haven't, I haven't, I don't have any recommendations for you, other than it doesn't have to be the same as other deputy directors. I don't have it. I'm, I'm thinking probably somewhere in the thirties. If there's an assistant, somewhere in the twenties. But I really just wanted to introduce that tonight and get your feedback. That's really all I wanted to do.
The person will be Ms. Moore, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not hiring anybody. I mean, no, it would have to be advertised. I mean, y'all would have to do a lot before we did it. You have to operate it and prove positions and we have to advertise it and all that kind of stuff. So, no, 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 she's, no, 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 there's no agreement to hire her or anything like that, or anybody else. And it has to be advertised. But the question really is, do, do we, you know, we, we've had different programs throughout the years. We haven't really had a very active Parks and Recreation Program other than our swimming program. Which has been grant funded nicely. So the question is, do we want to return to a, a real Parks and Recreation Program? Essentially, and Mr. Jones has also been picking up. And that, and, and in many ways, as far as mightiness for sure. But in other ways too, and, uh, because a lot of what that is, is, is mightiness, keeping up, keeping up things. And I think we're, we're in the process now of, which we're gonna talk about here in a little bit, of reopening the city's parks and all of those other issues as we get into nice weather and, and the pandemic has decided, subsided. We'll, we'll talk about that longer later, and we can move this part to later because I think it's related. But, you know, I, I'm preaching to the choir because you've all heard the same thing I've heard from constituents that there's a real need for a robust Parks and Recreation Program for the city. And, you know, really to do that, you need to have a director of Parks and Recreation or an assistant director. And most likely, they need a person too. And that was the recommendation.
So I would eventually like to see, um, our Parks and Recreation Department reopen. Uh, I'm excited to see if the grants that are being written, if we're going to get those and, um, put those to use. We didn't really, she didn't really say, uh, what they could be used for, but, you know, I know that will come later, but I look forward to opening it back up and having some things for our kids, not just to open it up to play basketball, but uh, do some, have some activities for our youth. As well as the upkeep.
There, there are grants out there to do things like restore these bleachers and the ballfields, uh, soccer programs and, and a lot of things. So, but you, you really do need someone to have that, to do it right. And most grants pay for, uh, so some grants, like swim park, swim program, we'll, we'll pay for salaries. Most of them don't pay for director salaries, but. Anyway. Any other comments? I guess I just ask y'all to email, email me or, or, uh, call me or let me know your feelings on that as we go forward and we'll, we'll see what we can do in two weeks as far as actually getting an action on them. But I do, do like to have your input on it because it's important, something, it's important issue for our citizens, something that I think all of us want to do, we just need to do it. And get with Mr. Turner on the financial part of that. And also the grants part of that. Uh, most of the program is gonna be grants. A lot of the personnel, some personnel are related to grants, some's not. Usually the personnel issue with grants is a temporary summer program kind of thing. And those are good, uh, but they're not permanent things. So we'll try to come back with something that you can actually act on and discuss, but please feel free to email me or let me know your ideas on that. Next item, Jenna Garbage Carts. An ordinance has been prepared by Ms. Ramsey to request waiving bidding on bidding on four hundred carts for a price of twenty-seven thousand dollars. This amount exceeds my spending limit. And a copy of the ordinance is in the packet and currently being reviewed by Attorney Valley. So I'm not sure Ms. Ramsey or Mr. Valley needs to be recognized.
Uh, it's, it's a standard compared to being waiver ordinance. Ms. Ramsey looked at it. She did, and I, I looked it over and this, this, it's fine. As relating to the ninety-five, uh, I believe it was ninety-five carts that, uh, the Public Works Department needs, um, Ms. Ramsey?
Uh, yes, sir, the, we have been ordering our carts from North Carolina at fifty at a time due to the pandemic and the difficulty with them getting the molding, plastic and things. Uh, our fifty kind of gets put to the side. Uh, I did speak with the people at Schaefer. We can order four hundred carts for about twenty-seven thousand. They will hold the four hundred and ship them to us as we need them. And they are ninety-five gallon carts and they're black. Uh, the gray molding is more difficult to get, so we opted to go with just the black. Uh, they will not charge us for the carts until they ship them. Uh, Schaefer is someone that both Helena and West Helena has used for many, many years. And they're one of the few garbage, uh, cart distributors. Uh, by ordering four hundred, we're able to get them at a cost of fifty-four dollars each as opposed to ordering a lesser amount that would cost more. And I would appreciate it if you would, uh, approve this so that the Street and Sanitation Department, especially Ms. Lenora, won't be battered every week by as many as fifty or sixty people getting on a waiting list needing carts because there's a, these have been run over or broken or burned. Uh, thank you.
Okay, what's that ordinance number?
Uh, fifteen.
You say fifteen?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, ordinance fifteen, read title on it.
Mr. St. Columbia, you're saying suspend the rules?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Place on third and final reading, reading the title on it, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Can't hear the mayor, mayor's muted, I think. You're muted.
Sorry about that. So, Mr. St. Columbia's made a motion, as stated by Mr. Valley, put ordinance number fifteen on third and final reading. Is there a second? Is there a second? I may have some people, other people on mute. So the, the motion is to put ordinance number fifteen regarding the, um, garbage carts purchasing on third and final reading. Well, that's one more time, I guess. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, what was this?
Ordinance number fifteen. A motion to put it on third and final reading on the garbage carts.
Second.
Let's have a second motion. Any other discussion or questions about the motion? If not, call the roll.
Forward. Ethately. Franklin?
Yes.
Okay. Franklin, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Valley says read it. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-eight three oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase ninety-five gallon bar cart for household garbage receptacles for the city of Helena, West Helena, and for other related purposes. Okay, now, Mr. Franklin? Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
I have four yes and two absent.
There needs to be a motion to adopt.
I shall move.
Mr. St. Columbia made his final adoption, ordinance number fifteen regarding, uh, garbage carts. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a second to the motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the roll.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin? Crockett?
Somebody got him muted.
Oh, okay. Franklin? Davis?
Yes.
Forward. Ethnally?
Yes.
That's four yes and one absent and one muted.
Most passes and now it needs to be a motion.
Okay, unmute him so he can do his vote.
Go ahead and unmute Mr. Mr. Franklin for his vote. Mr. Franklin, how do you vote?
I think he's muted, Mr. Mayor.
I, I don't, I can't mute him.
He's still muted.
Okay. Well, Ms. Franklin, we can't hear you and, and it looks like we have unmuted you, so just send your, well, I don't know, can we take a vote, Mr. Valley, by message like that? Mr. Valley, do you know, can we legally accept a vote by messenger like that?
He's present in the meeting. He, 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 I don't know why he's muted. Uh, there's no cause.
He's not muted.
I think.
Might be having connection problems, I don't know.
He said that he's muted. He just texted saying that he, somebody has him muted. And I remember you telling somebody to mute him about twenty minutes ago.
I did mute him, but he's now unmuted. So, but Mr. Valley, can we take his vote anyway?
He's in the public meeting. He, he can vote if he, if he puts it in the chat. Everybody will see what it said. But I think he, he needs to.
Mr. Franklin, if you can hear us, go ahead and un, either unmute.
He can unmute himself.
You, you, you might have yourself unmuted, I mean muted.
Yeah.
So unmute yourself and vote or send us a message so we can move on.
He says he has himself muted. He's still muted in the system.
I'm not gonna take any more time on this. We passed the motion to the next issue. We'll try to vote on this. We'll record his vote. We'll record his vote.
Mayor.
Yes, if that's what he wants, yes.
Mayor, I think you have to address this issue because if he's in the meeting and you have him on mute, that's, that's not, uh, ethical.
Well, I don't have him on, the, I don't have him on mute and he has to unmute himself. And we're holding up the whole meeting, waiting on this. So the motion's already passed anyway. If he wants to be recorded as a yes vote or a no vote, he can still be, we'll still count that since we've had technical problems. Uh, we'll count that as long as Mr. Allen doesn't have a problem with it.
Yeah. Okay, uh, there, there was actually, uh, and I don't remember Sandy saying exactly how much. I don't know if she did or not. Uh, but we actually did have ten thousand dollars in the budget for, uh, refuse. And so, uh, and I think, I'm not sure if Sandy mentioned it or not, but we did have a quote for twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars for those, uh, containers. And so I was letting the council know if it was okay with them that I would just add that twenty-eight, one five two quote, uh, for the refuse containers to the ten thousand dollars that was already appropriated.
Thank you.
Yeah, there was, there was ten thousand dollars already appropriated for it. But, but we've used three thousand of it, so, uh, I just want to add the twenty-eight thousand, one fifty-two to that ten thousand, if that's okay with the council.
Mr. Turner, would you mind if we did the emergency clause and then come back to that?
Oh, okay. I didn't know you guys want to finish some stuff.
We just have the emergency clause and then we can come back to that. So.
Okay.
The last question, ordinance number fifteen, is the emergency clause. Is there, is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause in ordinance number fifteen?
I made the motion.
For the emergency clause?
Yes, I thought I did. I shall move.
Mr. St. Columbia made his adoption of the emergency clause from ordinance number fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis takes the motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the roll.
Davis?
Yes.
I have a question. Is the bid twenty-seven thousand dollars or is it twenty-eight point whatever? Because we got two different figures.
Okay, uh, it should not exceed twenty-eight thousand, one fifty-two. The actual bid would be about twenty-seven thousand, but some of these are not gonna be ordered for maybe six months to a year, depending on how much Ms. Lenora needs. So I didn't want to have to come back and ask y'all to go up a little bit.
It's not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, right?
Right, twenty-eight thousand, one fifty-two.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions? Go ahead and proceed with the vote.
Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin? Four yes, two absent.
Okay, motion, motion passes for the clause one, one fifteen, okay, Mr. Turner. Your question was an appropriation question, right? About the, about the garbage carts.
Yes, yes, like I was saying, there was already ten thousand dollars appropriated for refuse containers and, um, we've used somewhere approximately three thousand dollars. There's six thousand dollars remaining, but I was asking the council if they wanted me just to add the twenty-eight one five two to the ten thousand? Or, uh, just make the total appropriations twenty-eight one five two? It was just my idea, just to add the twenty-eight to the thirty, just in case. Well, if she said that it's gonna be no more than twenty, I don't know if they want me to add the twenty-eight one five two to what's left.
I'd make the total, it should be just twenty-eight, that's not a big.
Okay, okay, that's what you're saying, yeah, I get you. Make the, make, make, make the appropriation now twenty-eight.
Right.
Okay, I got you, okay.
But if I could, though, we've already purchased some carts, haven't we? I think we mentioned fifty that we bought, Ms. Sandy.
Uh, yes, we, well, we purchased a total of seventy, that's what was on Ms. Lenora's list. I got them from, uh, two different vendors.
Well, we're talking about buying four hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, we're talking about buying four hundred more for twenty-eight thousand, yes, one fifty-two.
Right, so we need to add twenty-eight thousand to our budget.
But that's kind of the distinction I was trying to make, is that we've already.
No, sir, because, well, what I'm understanding from Mr. Turner is that we, you pay for those seven, right, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, we've.
And we have six thousand dollars now, so I think we only need to add the twenty-two thousand one hundred and whatever it is to make it total up to twenty-eight thousand. I don't think we should put a whole another twenty-eight thousand, we got six thousand dollars out there.
Okay.
No, I think what you need to do is break the twenty-eight thousand plus the three. So whatever the twenty-eight thousand is. Okay, they want an additional twenty-eight thousand, we've already spent three thousand one hundred ten dollars and sixty-two cents. So I need to add three thousand dollars to the twenty-eight. And then that'll come out to be thirty-one thousand dollars, that'll be the total amount that we spent. Because we've already.
Okay, I understand what you're saying now, okay, that's not, I agree.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Let's turn it up for Claire, are you asking for a motion to clear it up?
I want to make the total appropriations, uh, take the total appropriations for the refuse containers from ten thousand dollars currently to thirty-one two six three. That would be the current amount, the amount that we've already expended, three thousand one hundred and ten dollars and sixty-two cents plus the twenty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars that you guys, that the council has approved of tonight. And so that total appropriation will come to thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
And we got the vote on it?
I'm waiting, Ms. Crockett, I don't, I don't see Ms. Sandy, I don't, I don't hear, maybe she lost, uh, connection, because I don't see her on here. Am I the only one that's still on?
No, I'm still here.
I'm still on with the turn, I just inboxed everybody saying, I don't hear anything, I did a chat to the chat. I don't hear anything, what's next on the agenda?
The criminal justice complex agreement.
Okay, on the criminal justice contract, complex agreement, I reviewed that, the contract is for a year. What has been taken out of that common justice contract agreement is all the things relating to dispatch. It is for space, I think that the mayor emailed you through Helen, his assistant, uh, the floor plan that we asked about two weeks ago, she said that this afternoon sometime. But it's a standard contracts for six dollars a square foot, and it's only for the space you have previously voted.
Mr. Butler, you still talk? Is there, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I think Andre is in the building with me, I think he's in his office and I can, you know, I've been having some problems, so maybe he's having some problems too. Because I, I've cut out a couple of tenants tonight.
I was in the middle of talking, cut me out. I was in the middle of talking and it just kicked me off, uh, so, but the contract is for one year. And, uh, is, is not the lengthy contract, I did discuss to the mayor, my concern still, it's just a small concern, there will be negotiating contract annually. Uh, but the contract is fine, other than I think that we need to discuss with them, uh, parameters for is increase. The contract provided that they would pay all the utilities, we would have to pay for cleaning the floors, they would wax the floor uh, from time to time periodically, what it says, and it also says that they would play the utilities, uh, that we would not pay the utilities. Uh, but I think that's part of the contractor.
But it says that we would be responsible for our own phone and internet, right?
Right, we'll be responsible for our own phone and internet.
Okay.
But what about this year to year, because, you know, I have, what if they wake up next year, it's time to be, if they don't want to renew our contract? Where, where do we go then?
Well, that is a concern, and I've raised that concern before, uh, I, I think the issue, uh, probably the better, the best thing to do would have language in that, that, uh, relating to that, I would discuss that with Amy, uh, Amy Board, and so that we could resolve that issue. I have not discussed this contract in further with her since I, since I received it. Uh, but that's the same concern that I had and I've expressed before. I would prefer a lengthy contract, but this, this is what gets you going, you all have a question that we go forward. Now, I don't know how much the move would cost, uh, that, that's a question that we've asked the chief along, a long time ago. Uh, and see from the mayor, I have not been provided with any information as to the cost of the move and what, what would it take, the contract itself, what you see in it is nineteen thousand two hundred dollars annually. Uh, but I, I think that, uh, as a relation to the move cost, I'd have to defer to the mayor, uh, the city treasurer, the city clerk, or the chief of police. I have not been given any data as to how much the cost would be.
I haven't either, Mr. Valley.
Now, currently, as I'm looking at this, I'm looking to see who's online, I see that I'm online, I see that Mr. Franklin is online, that he's no longer muted, is what it's showing in the, in the box. Joe St. Columbia is on the line, and Wanda is on the line. Could you please sign me to see who's on the line as part of the city council, so we can make sure we still have a call?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you much, Franklin.
Well, I've been muted all night, so it really didn't matter, the mayor had me muted, so.
Yes.
With this, with this jail that.
Wait, wait just a second, Mr. Franklin, I'm sorry to make sure we still have a call, with Franklin, you're here, is anybody else on the line?
I'm still here.
Ms. Crockett is here, is anyone else, is council member on the line?
It doesn't look like it, Mr. Valley. It's Ms. Crockett and Mr. Franklin.
That's all I see, too.
I'm on the line.
Joe's on, okay.
But still, we need another, because the mayor, you hit them all.
So we have three people, right now, we currently do not have a call. Uh, if someone else comes back in line, the call will be reconstituted, but at the current moment, you do not have a call. You can continue to discuss the jail, with Franklin. Uh, the fact that you don't have a call is more than, more than two of you are present, so the meeting is still ongoing, it's a legal meeting under state Arkansas law. And which we have to have other people witness, uh, but uh, there cannot be, at, at, at this moment until you have a full call. Does some other council member come back in?
Well, this is my concern, what about the people who, I mean, the justice.
I believe what the mayor just came back in, I see in the west side that says Mayor Smith. Kevin Smith is back over line, so you have a call reconstituted.
And we do have a call?
Yes, Mr. Crockett, Ms. Crockett, Mr. Franklin, uh, Mr. St. Columbia, and you are on the line, so you have a call.
Okay, like you said, I don't know what happened, but.
Yeah, but Mr. Franklin was discussing, uh, the jail contract, Mr. Franklin.
Jail contract, let me, let me just, before we leave the garbage cart. Do we do the appropriation for the garbage carts? Because I don't think the contract's gonna work if we don't have the appropriation or the purchase. Mr. Valley, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I don't, I don't, I don't, I think Mr. Turner cleared it up, then everybody got kicked off the line, I don't know what the connection issue was. But everybody was kicked off the line, uh.
All right, just don't let us forget to get back to that, Mr. Franklin, go ahead.
I don't think we should, we don't have anybody that's taking minutes.
I'm here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Okay, Sandy, did we, did we pass appropriation?
No, Ms. Crockett. No, ma'am, we didn't.
Well, St. Columbia, I think that what Mr. Turner was saying was thirty-one thousand and some dollars, what's Turner still on the line? What's Turner, what was the amount appropriated?
I just got back, for what?
The garbage carts.
Okay, I just got back, I don't know if you guys realized it or not, okay. Uh, you mean the, the, the amount that I'm requesting that they?
Yes, the total amount that you're requesting, the three thousand and some we already spent, and up to twenty, that we, that they just appropriated. Uh, what they need to have appropriated tonight?
Thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, appropriate thirty-one thousand, how much?
Thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three.
Thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars is an appropriation for, uh, garbage collection. How does it read in the budget?
Uh, in the budget, they are refuse containers.
Refuse containers. Is there a motion to appropriate that amount of money for refuse containers?
I shall move.
I thought I had given that in Ms. Davis, I said.
Okay, let's go with it.
I have, so, okay, so Ms., we all got disconnected about that time, so. Ms. Crockett, you made a motion to that effect already?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Davis seconded the motion. Okay, all right, so, technical difficulties notwithstanding, I guess we still have a motion on the floor. Maybe now we got disconnected, um, so any questions, do we need to restate the motion, I guess we've already done that? Any, any questions about the motion, comments? If not, call the roll.
Davis? St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin? Etherly? Oh, Franklin?
He said I've been muted, oh, it doesn't even matter, because I don't know what, I've been muted.
Etherly?
Press up a just vote.
Davis? Okay, I have, I have three yeses and three absent or offline.
I'll vote, yes, Ms. Ramsey.
I was muted at the time, so I don't think I should participate, because I was muted, so I couldn't say it for anyone.
Okay, all right.
But frankly, so you could vote, though you were muted, you heard the whole conversation.
So the motion passes, Ms. Franklin? May Miss.
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, motion passed, thank y'all, all right, we're gonna move on to the criminal justice complex agreement. And I kind of came in in the middle of that discussion, so I think Mr. Franklin was talking, so, Mr. Franklin, you recognize.
And listen, the justice complex sounds like a good idea, but I think some kind of system on that, because you have a lot of people who do walk to the police department to file reports and complaints. So I think, you know, I, I mean, one of the citizens brought it to me, saying that, hey, you know, you think about, you know, moving the, moving the police department out there, because that's how we exit the police department, so we don't, we already have a problem, we don't have a place over here for the people to make reports. So I think that, it's something that we, you know, we need to think about. Uh, the officers are not gonna be able to go to the people, you know, that's a concern. You know, about, you know, our people getting to, it's already a problem, people get to West Ham. Hospital, people walk to get to the justice complex, so about the hospital. It's just something we let out, know what's going on, that's all I've been saying. Before I get muted, let me be quiet.
Okay, Ms. Valley, I probably missed some, I don't know if I missed your comments or not, if I did, we might have had other people listen to. Did you, did you say anything when, when this conversation started?
Yes, I did, uh, the city council is in charge of real property, previously, they, they had voted to authorize you to finalize contract with the, with the county. At that time, it included dispatchers and et cetera. Uh, this contract scales back that, because, uh, it does not address dispatchers, dispatches that have been hired by the county and equipment is out there, uh, this contract deals six dollars a square foot, a total of nineteen thousand two hundred dollars for one year. Uh, the city pays the, the phone and internet, and the county pays all the other utilities, water, electric, and whatever other utilities cities are fighting, responsible for, its own cleaning of the floors, some of the county would periodically go through and, and clean, uh, and wax the floors. Uh, the city, they were asking the question as to what were the moving costs? And there was nobody on line that understood, had information, neither me nor Mr. Turner, about what, what are the costs about moving? When the council approved the, the police department to move, uh, they inquired of Chief Smith for him to give information as to what was the total cost of move. that they were having, asking what is the cost for the city police department to move from ninety-eight East Plaza to the Montague King address.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor. Can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry, I didn't want y'all to hear the dogs barking. So so we're so we're agreeing to the lease. Can we do that one thing at a time, or is it conditioned on on the maybe expenses? Is we give it the lease, I guess, is is the first question.
I said the lease was fine. My only caveat about the lease is just one year, and that they can raise the rates after a year. And I told them what I told you earlier today, that we probably have some line put in there just simply about raising rents on a percentage rate basis versus it can go above a certain percentage if they increase the the rent. But the two would not connect to that. I think the city council just wants to know what is the cost for moving the police department into the justice complex?
And my question was, what what about the length of the contract? What happens if they decide not to renew the contract after a year? What happens to the police department?
Well, the 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 length of it, you know, we've gone back and forth on this for several years, I guess, at least a couple of years. And at first, it was a four-year contract, I think. And maybe five, but at least four, five, I can't remember now.
I think it was.
For, there was an objection to the length of it because it would it would also bind us to something. And I think we were kind of in a trust but verify move, so let's try this. And without any guarantees that we have to stay. And I think the cost of moving, I think that's important, especially if we lose control of our finances, it's important. But I don't think it's as important as being locked into a lease. And we're unhappy and feel like we don't have a way to get out of that legally. And also much more expensive potentially. So then we backed off. Those were the points that were made before. So then we backed off of that and went back to a manual lease and as a as an antidote to that problem. So if either party is unhappy, we can we can move. And that in a way, sort of just like it would any other kind of lease, kind of keeps both folks you know, in the game to try and be to work together and not cause problems with the other one. So I mean, that that's the reason. I mean, it's been all over the map. But a year would, if we left in a year, obviously, we'd have moving expenses again, and that's not something we'd want to do. But it's a lot better than the alternative of being stuck in a lease agreement that we don't want to stay in. And then having to pay, you know, the resulting cost of paying out that contract or or having to stay or whatever reason. So it just gave us more flexibility on our end. And now very seriously, if we'll be kicked out because you know, we're we're something that that they want, you know, they want tenants. They want us as a tenant. And so it's just been, what are the terms of that? So that's the reason for the year. It's a good question, but I mean, if you make it four years, then you got the other questions.
Well, I, this is my thing. I don't have a problem, but you've got to look at, and like I'm gonna be brief, but you got to look at your citizens. What is best for your citizens as well? I understand that, you know, you want to move to a new building, but what about your citizens? They 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 walk to the police department to do reports. They can't get it right out to the justice complex. Figure, you know, I I was elected by the people to make a decision, but I think this is something you are, you know, I've asked you all several times to ever let the people out there who don't have internet access, who reads the paper, or do some kind of public service announcement to get the citizens feedback, because some folks walk to the police department. Some of the police department, before the pandemic hit, was open and people could come in and make a report. If you're moving out here by the hospital, don't they handicap our people a little bit more? I want you to think about, you know, it's just more than us. It's the people who depend on the Plaza Street Department. Or will you still keep the department open so people can go out there just to make a report? So what I mean, what what other option are you gonna give the public to do?
Well, you know, we've talked about it several times. We could talk about substations on Plaza and and also on Cherry Street because it's, as you pointed out earlier, and that's something that the council can certainly discuss as 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 options to rectify that question or answer that question, and I would be open to it. I think it would be, I think it'd be good if we could afford it to have have some substation presence on Plaza and Cherry in addition to that.
Well, I I can't.
But I don't think it necessarily hinges on whether we should move or not.
Well, it it does because it's citizens. It's citizens that know where the police department is. I mean, that's why I don't like to get into these kind of things with you because I think I raise a valid point. I think, yes, we need a building. Yes, we do, but you're not telling the people how much this move is gonna cost people. Yeah, I think it's a good idea too, but I mean, you know, let's be realistic. What is it gonna cost? What if our people decide to opt out that it's not where they want to be? Have you all decide to ask members of the city council to go out there and view the space that the police department will be moving into? Have you decided, say, hey, let's ask some of the people who work for the police department to go out there and look at the space? Can we go out there and measure the space to see if it's enough space for our people to have a bathroom? Do they have a conference room? Do they have a booking room? All these things. How many square feet are we getting? Answer these questions should be answered in the city council. I think we should, I mean, go out there and look at the 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 place that we're trying to put our people in. You know, we, how did this better serve our police department? We say we got, maybe how many officers y'all see I've got now? Twenty, ten, five? How many we got? How many how many people in this house? I mean, all these things we looked at before, you know.
You hear all the questions you've asked. All the questions you've asked.
Why would I answer the question? I always get cut off. Why is that?
I'm saying, all the questions you ask are good questions, but they have been asked for at least the last three years. They're all good questions, but they all have answers, and they've been answered for some time. Since you have revised for plan, had to request Ms. Ford, I believe it was.
You sent me a revised for plan today.
You have, Mr. Franklin, so that you have a revised for plan. Are you for it or are you against it?
Hell, no.
That's really the question.
Shit.
Okay, you're against the maybe to the justice complex.
Because it's like you started cutting me off, and I'm asking questions for the citizens. Every time, every time I say something, I feel like it's unfair to me that everybody on this call, they know I said, well, hey, every time I ask a question, that's what aggravates me. I can't talk, but you can talk. I'm getting aggravated by it. And I feel like, what's the point of me being on the call? Everything I had on agenda, I've been muted out. I couldn't say nothing. So, hey, you gonna do what you want to do without me? I feel like the other members of the city council, y'all should be like, hey, Franklin's on the call. Every time I say something, I'm getting cut off, but I I got people asking me questions, and I'm trying to make sure that I'm making the right decision for the people in this community. I get tired of going back and forth with you, but so, but that's, I mean, I feel like this, let me just leave because everybody on here knows that I'm asking questions. I'm not asking questions just because I want to get on your nerves. I want to understand it for these these folks out here. Some people are asking me, hey, I'm going to go to the police department to do a report. I mean, if you move out there, just if you the mayor, better explain it to these people. Hey, we want to move out there. What is it gonna cost the citizens? What if they decide to move back to the building? Who occupied the space after they moved? Would the fire department get it? Will they redo it? What is it? Why when I say something, I gotta get all this? Man, I'm just thinking that. I feel like everybody on the car.
Mr. Franklin, air bell on the call goes by. The rules of the meeting allow us other people to speak and a lot of people to ask questions. And they have a right to that time just as much as you do. You don't have a right to dominate the meeting.
Well, you talk more to anybody.
You've all been asked before. You've all been addressed before. And at some point, you have to make a decision. It's costing the city five hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Franklin?
They have not been answered for me.
Franklin.
They have not been. Well, I'm still gonna vote no.
All right, well, the the vote that was held on this was to give Mr. Valley the authority to enter to local agreement, interlocal agreement with the county. There is one before you. It's been.
I don't think that's what the, I think for y'all to to get a, not to enter into an agreement, to get a agreement, not to enter into one, to get a agreement that we will vote on. I don't think it was that you could enter into it.
Mr. Valley has stated the same way.
Thank you, Ms. Crockett. That's what I was trying to say. Because we we gave y'all a plan to.
Mr. Franklin, you're not recognized. Mr. Valley, do you want to weigh in on that?
Anyway, I would have to, I would have.
Franklin, you're not recognized. You've been heard.
I would have Mr. Valley. That's not me.
Mr. Valley, Mr. Franklin, stop. Let Mr. Valley answer.
I would have to double check with the clerk, but I I think I agree with the mayor. I thought the city council had came over to the process and said, in principle, you're headed agreement, but you wanted the mayor and I to finalize the conversation. From that point on, we've been trying to meet with most of the county judges and the county attorney. And it's been a long process. The mayor has primarily done the majority of the meeting. I've been active in some of the meetings. And we've been going back and forth with with kind of Judge Clark Hall about this this issue. But my understanding, and Madam Clerk, correct me and the mayor if we're wrong, I think that they voted in principle for the the move over there, and for us just to come back with the final final numbers. I think that's what.
Well, I don't remember that. Somebody gonna have to tell me that I'm right.
Well, at this point, it would take the process and do something that was already done.
Mr. Mayor, could I have a four minute?
Yes, Mr. St. Columbia.
Thank you, sir. I I think Mr. Valley is correct. We, and of course, we can go back in the records and look, but I think it's gonna, I'd like for it to go on record that I am for the move. And the cost of moving is really insignificant to the benefits we're going to reap out of this thing. You know, we we have tossed this thing around for quite some time. I looked over the contract, the agreement that has been presented to us. I got it right in front of me. I've looked it over several times. I see absolutely, it looks like it's in our favor to engage in this agreement. And I, we have authorized you guys to go ahead and and do it. I I I see no reason why we shouldn't. And I think by us dragging our feet is is causing more problems than we really need. I think for going record, I am for it. I am for this agreement. And as far as the cost of moving, I think it's really insignificant as to what we're going to benefit. So I vote to move forward with this agreement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have to say.
Yes, may I have a call, please?
The lease, the leasing, I just want to point, then says thirty-two hundred square feet of actual leased space utilities, addresses the parking issue, addresses a lot of the issues that y'all gave Mr. Valley and I to ask us to address. And, you know, you can only kick this can down the road so many, so many times. The county has to move forward with signage, other designations, and all of these other questions are big questions, but it doesn't really relate to the actual lease itself. And so, I mean, I would, if you, I'm for the lease. It's, I haven't always been in favor of this. We negotiate it back and forth. Or at least on basis of the actual leases anyway. This is a lease I can live with. Mr. Valley said he can.
I have a question.
We were given the authority to negotiate it and approve it. So, okay, Ms. Crockett, you recognize.
So what you're saying is that we gave you the authority to go and negotiate a lease and to enter into the contract with someone without us even looking at the lease? I I don't remember that being the situation. I remember we agreed to allow you to negotiate a lease and then bring it back to us. I I don't remember anywhere where it says for us entering, and Ms. Ramsey, if it's not too much problems, could you possibly find those of?
Ms. Crockett, with all due respect, with all due respect, Ms. Crockett, you don't need to do that because you don't have to give us the authority to negotiate a lease. We already had that authority. We didn't need your approval to negotiate a lease. What we needed was your approval to accept what we came up with.
Okay, I just asked, okay, so now you're telling me I can't ask them to do that?
You can ask them.
Okay, well, I'm asking a question. Can that be possible? No, because I just don't see us telling you to enter into a contract which a lease was no back, without us knowing what the lease was gonna be about, because that was the biggest distinction about the lease because there was a lot of flaws in it.
And I remember the same thing with you, Mrs. Crockett. That we did say, hey, that you could go, you and the city attorney can go explore and tell us what you all came back with, and then we'll make a decision. We gave the mayor and the city.
Ms. Crockett? This is an indication of if you're for or against the lease.
I'm not gonna answer that question till I get my question answered. Thank you.
Well, here's one thing, one thing, if you're not comfortable with with the lease.
Just about, wait a minute. Mr. Valley, you don't know that. You've heard two people talk about it. This is a majority rule.
So that's the two people he was talking to. He was talking to the two.
Excuse me, Ms. Crockett.
You you are too. You cut Mr. Valley off in the middle of his sentence. Mr. Valley was talking, and you cut him off.
That's right. Mr. Valley made a statement that that's not true, or at least I must say, he didn't tell the desire, he didn't tell a lie. He made an observation that's not true.
All he said was, if y'all, y'all can be two people, Mayor. You trying to, you trying to figure it out a different way.
Ms. Crockett, we've heard from two members of the council. I would like, we've also heard from one who's for it. I'd like to hear from any other members of the council, their views of this lease before we move on. We have kicked this can down the road for three years. Now, it's time, it's time, it's time to hear from everybody.
Nobody else.
Whether you think we should negotiate it or not, or any of those other issues, the only thing that matters is, are you for, are there two people in addition to Mr. St. Columbia and me who support this lease? And if they are, would you speak?
No, I'm not gonna say that. What I'm trying to tell you, there's nobody else on this meeting. No other council members, but me, Mr. St. Columbia, and Mr. Franklin. So he had to be talking to the ones that's here. So I I really would appreciate if you let us know that if that's what he was trying to say.
I'm going to, but but you're not the entire council. And it's not a fair representation to say that just because you missed, you and Mr. Franklin spoke against it, that you're not, that that we don't have enough council members to approve it. And it's also not fair representation to say that you did not give Mr. Valley and I the authority to enter into an agreement when that's exactly what happened. We don't need your approval to negotiate an agreement. What we needed was your approval to enter into an agreement. We have an agreement. I agree with it. Mr. Valley agrees with it. The council already gave us the authority to enter into it. We are bringing this up tonight as a courtesy to get your input, not to ask you whether to approve it or not. And that that is point of order.
So, Mayor, what you're saying is.
I would like to know if if we do have a majority of members of the council who are for it, we might as well just vote it up or down and be done with it.
Okay, Mayor, so what you're saying is, we really don't have to vote on this, right? That's what you basically saying, right?
You've already approved an, or you've already approved a motion to give us that authority.
You always say that, and it's not true. It's not true. It's not true.
But I'm.
We don't need your, we don't need your approval to negotiate a lease. What we need is your approval of the lease. You gave us that authority a long time ago, and we've been working on it ever since. What we've done is presented to you to get your input and your comments. You apparently and Mr. Franklin are against it. I appreciate that. I respect that. But you're not the majority of the council. And my point is, it's unfair to characterize the council as being against something when we haven't heard from everybody on the council. That's all I was gonna say.
As a friend.
I apologize. If, if I did not, if I didn't state that as clearly as I wanted, I was just trying to say. That I don't think we've got an indication that the council was against it.
Well, as a practical matter, I was asking about the court, uh, about having a special car meeting from a practical standpoint. Before you came back online and what Ms. Crockett just adequately stated was. The only people that's in this meeting are you, uh, Ms. Crockett, Mr. Franklin, and Mr. St. Columbia. And maybe Ms. David, but David was trying to get back in, but Ethel has not been able to get back in. And, cause I'll text him, he was not able to get back in. So at most you have three votes, so it wouldn't pass tonight anyway. And that's what I was.
I'm on the meeting and I've been back for quite a while.
Right, well, she's back in, but it's still, you already had two to express, no, they hadn't voted. And then you have you and Ms. Davis has not expressed how she would consider it. And you have Mr. St. Columbia. So, uh, that's what we were, that's what I was trying to say five minutes ago.
I'm for it because you and I both negotiated and agreed to be for it. Mr. St. Columbia said he was for it. Yeah, we're elected to make decisions. At some point, we have to make a decision.
Like to see the, uh, Helena West Hall, the police department move to the justice complex. I would.
If you, somebody put that in form of a motion, we can vote on it and.
I so move. I make that a formal motion that we move out there tomorrow. And approve this, uh, contract.
Make some motion that we approve the lease agreement. As stated, included in your packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Ms. Davis' second is the motion. Any other questions or comments before we vote?
Uh, can I ask something? Hey, Mayor. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Right, I want to ask a question. Wasn't, and I don't know if someone, I may have gone out of the meeting and I had to get back in. But didn't, didn't the, um, agreement say have a deadline by Ju- June first or something? Was, was there a deadline that they?
June first is, June first is the date that begins the agreement.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, Ms., if another of the comments, questions, Ms. Sandy Coler.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Rocket?
No.
Ford? Ethely? Davis?
Yes.
Franklin? Franklin? You have two yes. You have one no.
No, I vote yes.
I vote no.
Mr. Franklin voted no. And then Smith voted yes. So you have.
Ms. Ford is trying to get in. Ms. Ford, Ms. Ford is trying to get in to vote. So, eh, eh, she, she just, she, I, I, she just, eh, eh, texted because she, I don't remember. This is my thing. Ms. Crockett is absolutely correct. I don't think the voters will be right because we voted for the mayor and the city attorney to go out there and look and bring back to us. So I think we need to, uh, Mr. Mr. St. Columbia, I, I know y'all want to move out there, but we were supposed to go out there and look and see.
I, I've been out there.
I'm just saying, but we ju- we just got this proposal tonight, w- of the floor plan tonight. I'm not, eh, I, I wa- I want to make sure that we doing the right thing. And I think that, you know, and Ms. Ford is trying to get in, so I'm hoping that.
You'd still be against it. You would, you're not for it.
Hey, 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 let me, let me say some jokes. You, you don't know what I do because every time we try to vote for employees get a raise, mysteriously your phone mess up. So don't tell me what I would be against when you, when, when you get your locks cut for free by the city. So don't, don't play.
Mr. Franklin, you're out of order.
You've been out of.
Get, Mr. Franklin, I'm gonna have to meet you again. Now try, try not to insult and bully other members of the council or this body. Again. Now, the, the issue as far as, while we, if we'll wait a little bit longer. But the issue about visiting jail, the, the, the joint, the judge and sheriff have both invited. All the members of the council and everybody else multiple times and had multiple public occasions to turn the facility. I've been out there many times myself. So there's been an open discussion, an open facility, uh, for some time and.
Ms. Ramsey, can you tell us what the vote is?
It's two no, two absent, two yes, and that's not counting the mayor's vote, and he would be the third yes.
Is Ms. Ford actively trying to get in?
I can't tell on my end.
All right, well, I can't tell either. On my end, so. Uh, we don't see that she's trying to get in. So the motion fails, the lease did not give proof. As far as I'm concerned, that issue is over. If y'all want to bring it up later, you can. Uh, but this city has to move forward at some point. We can't just keep kicking this down the road. That's why you gave us the authority to do it. We worked hard on it. We spent a lot of time on it. The city is losing five hundred thousand dollars a year because of the money that was redirected for that facility.
I'm gonna, uh, interrupt you like you did, Mr. Valley. Don't tell half truths. We did not give you that authority.
Well, I'm afraid you did, but. The motion fails. All right, so we're gonna move on to elected official salaries. And I'm just gonna open that up.
Who put that on the agenda?
Mr. Valley.
Oh, okay, well then.
Oh, yeah, I put that on the agenda. I put on the agenda, uh, all, all elected officials, but more specifically, I was talking about myself. Uh, I had talked, uh, I didn't know if any other electrician wanted to talk to you all about it. I had talked to you all about it, the, last year during the budgeting process and I, uh. Also, uh, let me give you the history. I was city attorney. I was elected city attorney. In January nineteen, under December, November nineteen ninety-eight, I served as city attorney for the city of Helena West Hall from January first. Nineteen ninety-nine, the December, uh, thirtieth, uh, two thousand and five, and then consolidated the city from December thirty-first. To December first, two thousand and ten, and I came back in November. Uh, and then October of two thousand and fifteen, I've been city attorney since then. Uh, my su- salary structure back when I was West Home, I was paid approximately ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year. My basic salary was six hundred eighty-four dollars. Plus I received a hundred dollars a hour for everything I did. In essence, everything outside of court, I was paid a hundred dollars a hour to do. And in fact, in two thousand and five, when the, when the two cities, when the city were fighting within itself, uh, we had to go to court because they had stopped paying. And that was court orders to show that they, they had to pay me seventy-five thousand dollars in addition to what they'd already paid. Uh, that was not effectuated until two thousand and eight. Ms. Ramsey is familiar with that because she had to cut the checks after. Uh, the city had the money because it didn't have the money. When I left the city, December thirty-first, two thousand and ten, my salary was approximately seventy-two thousand. Now, that's been a downward trajectory for me from nineteen ninety-nine until two thousand and twenty-one. My current salary is sixty-eight dollars. Uh, and I handle all of the, the city legal matters, uh, several of the ones I'm conflicted on. And, uh, I am not comparing myself to anyone, whether the department heads or anyone else. Uh, but I, I request the city council to evaluate and, and to increase my salary. And so that's why I asked it to be placed on, on the, on the agenda of this evening for due consideration. And I thought the other electricians would be considering as well, but as for me, that's what I, I had requested.
Increase your salary to what?
Well, uh, I would like it to be eighty thousand. Is it sixty-eight now?
Are you asking us to vote on this tonight? Or do we have time? I said, I would like to look at some things.
Well, if, if, eh, I prefer you go ahead and do it, but if, if you're going to table it, then, then we could, eh, eh, you could do that as well. You're the most appropriate. Money, I don't appropriate anything.
Mayor, you don't have anything to say on this?
I'm not asking for a raise.
No, I'm not, I'm not telling you ask for a raise. I'm telling the raise for Mr. Fallon.
Well, I think, I think he'd like to speak for themselves on this issue. He spoke.
How do you feel about it?
Well, how do you feel about it?
I think he deserves it.
I'm, I'm more interested in what y'all think about it because y'all are gonna have to approve it. And if we have.
But I still would like your opinion.
And if we, and if we, and if we have the money to pay for it. And, you know, we might have other elected officials who want to speak up, but, uh, so I'm not gonna. All I can tell you is that I'm not asking for a raise. But I'm also not going to prevent other elected officials from asking for one if they want to. Just like anybody else had for a raise, they have a right to make a case.
Man, I think that you don't have a form. I think Ms. Crockett is the only city council member left on the line.
Yeah, is that right, Ms. Ramsey?
Uh, let me see. Uh, yes, sir. That's right.
All right, so then we don't have an official meeting. Um, so. Uh, I guess we'll, we'll table. These, uh, additional three items to the next meeting. However, I'll briefly say that. That, uh, to the extent that I can legally do so. I'm intending to reopen the city June first to, uh, those items that the mayor makes a decision on without the council. Regarding the parks, um, and. The, uh, other issues that, that dealt with the pandemic. We've had two fatalities in the last month. It's still a very serious thing. We're still gonna pursue very aggressively to try and encourage people to get vaccinated. We're gonna still continue to do that campaign and hope that we, we, um, just get as many people vaccinated as we can. And embrace ourselves for the fall and hope we don't have a relapse. Uh, but the state, the governor, uh, the CDC this week came out with. Uh, different guidelines and so it's my opinion that we should go ahead and. And the, the things that I did, uh, I'm gonna undo January, June first, which primarily would be the parks. The ability to people, for people to congregate, um, above the state guidelines. Although that was a state guideline thing, we just implemented it. Um, but as far as any kind of prohibitions about having events, um, we'll, we'll go back. To the senior lieutenant we had before. As far as council meetings. Uh, what I was gonna ask y'all to consider is the possibility of starting in June or, or, uh, at some point in June, a hybrid meetings. Uh, Ms. Howard has talked to, um, has been working on ability to have hybrid meetings. Um, so, but we're, we don't have a court, so I'm not gonna keep y'all. But, uh, just give you that notice. So I guess we don't need a motion either. We no wonder we have a court. Long meeting, one of the longest things we've had in a long time. We had a lot of, uh, a lot of items to cover. So. Thank y'all very much for those who are still in attendance and y'all have a good evening.